So, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the April 4th, 2023, meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Bishop Easton if he would give us the invocation.
Father God, we just thank you once again for another day. You're the God of all grace and mercies. And we just ask you, God, today, for your blessings upon the commissioners today and all that they have, oh, God, on their agenda for the day. We thank you for our gathering today, Father. We just thank you for your leading of your Spirit. Have your word today, God, in the name of the Lord, among these, your people. God, we just thank you for all that you have put our hands to do and you are assigned to do. I pray, God, that you will lead in God. Give wisdom, understanding, knowledge into whatever, oh, God, that needs to be, oh, God, discussed today. I pray, God, in the name of the Lord, that you continue to bless each commissioner, oh, God, even their families, God. I pray, God, for health and strength, in Jesus' name. God, we just thank you for this day, for, God, this is a wonderful day that you've blessed us. And, God, we are thankful for it. We give you praise, glory, and honor. And, God, you declare in your word that, oh, God, all that in authority, Lord God, hallowed are under your hand. Bless them now, God, as only you can. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you, Bishop Easton. Bishop Easton comes to us today from Bethel Way Church there on Route 4, just north of Huntington. A beautiful church sits right there on the side of the road. We thank you. That brings us to approval of the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda as presented?
Mr. President, I make a motion, we approve and adopt an amended agenda, moving that those consent items to new business.
Second. I motion the second that we adopt an amended agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public service announcements.
Sorry, Mr. President, there was not an amended agenda. It is the agenda as submitted. We did not move any items from consent.
I just read, oh, my apology, read the wrong line. Mr. President, make a motion to approve and adopt the agenda as submitted. Thank you, Mr. Counsel.
I have a motion to second that we adopt the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I would say it's Monday, but it's Tuesday.
Now, we got that out of the way.
My mistake.
So, I have a couple of public service announcements. April is Maryland Flood Awareness Month, so those individuals in Calver County that live in low-lying areas need to make sure they're prepared and pay attention to weather events that may cause flooding in their areas. We also want to pass along our condolences to Councilwoman Lynn Strigl's family, who was a former North Beach Town Councilwoman. And she was a written attorney and a businesswoman and was a great asset to North Beach. And also, Easter is coming, this coming Sunday. Everybody will be out observing Easter. And we want to wish everybody has a very safe and happy holiday. That concludes the public service announcements for today. And that takes us into proclamations, and we have many proclamations today. Apparently, April is proclamation month. And that's why Katie went on vacation. So, the first proclamation we have today is for Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Commissioner Grasso.
Would you like to introduce yourselves before you come up, please?
I'm Dr. Sudha Haley. I'm representing the Asian American Pacific Islander. And I have handed you these and hope, and we are so thrilled that you, Commissioner Grasso, will be speaking at our festival that we'll be having on April 15th. And also, I'm representing the Commission on Aging, Calver County Commission on Aging, and AARP, and many other organizations. But I noticed that you have here the Month of the Military Child. Well, I would like to make a shout out to our twin son, who has been through the Calver County Schools, stellar schools, and also the music program, was a first trumpet, and is now in active duty, serving. He is an engineer, and he's an army engineer at Aberdeen, proving grounds. And I just wanted to say that, even though he's not a child, he's still my child.
Thank you.
Okay. And we have some others from our AAPI community.
Come on up, please.
Good morning. My name is Bob Gates, and I'm the current president of the Phil Am Association of Calver County.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Joy Gates, representing Phil Am Association of St. Mary's County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, welcome to all three of you. I'm very excited to present this proclamation and also looking forward to being with you a week from Saturday. So, thank you for being here. Your dress is gorgeous. Oh, my goodness, my goodness. Okay. Whereas May is nationally recognized as Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And whereas our Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander residents touch our lives every day, they serve in our county's, our country's military and civil service and start new businesses and occupy numerous professional roles, including physicians and attorneys. And whereas we honor and celebrate our Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders as we move forward to ensure diversity, equity, and inclusion, and fulfill the promise of opportunity to ensure all Americans thrive in Calver County. And whereas AARP Maryland, the Calver County Department of Economic Development, Calver Library, the Calver County Department of Parks and Recreation, Charles County Library, Phil Am Association of Southern Maryland, St. Mary's County Library, Southern Maryland Regional Library Association, and additional collaborators cordially invite the community to partake in a celebration of Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander culture featuring dance, music, games, and food on April 15th at the Calver County Fairgrounds from 10:00 to 2:00. Is this the first time you all are having this?
Actually, yes. It's a tri-county, particularly.
Wonderful, wonderful. Looking forward to it. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Calver County Board of County Commissioners that May 2023 be known as Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Be it further proclaimed that by this action, we encourage all citizens to recognize the extraordinary contributions and vibrant culture and languages of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islanders, given under our hands and seal this fourth day of April 2023, signed by all five county commissioners.
Here we go. In. One, two, three. One, two. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
So, the next proclamation is for Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Commissioner Arlen.
Okay. Who do we have here for this proclamation? Stanley? If you want to introduce everybody, Sheriff, you can introduce your piece as well. And come on up after you introduce yourself, please.
Morning, Commissioners. Stanley Harris, Division Chief Emergency Communications. Now, I'm here to receive the proclamation for the division, but it's really for the telecommunicators that perform this every day, day in and day out. Now, I'd like to point out, last year, our division provided critical lifesaving instructions 432 times. Those instructions are attributed to 11 life saves, you know, throughout last year. They also delivered one baby over the phone. You know, we're a safer county for the job that they do day in and day out. And like I said, this is really for them.
Want to introduce who you have with you?
That's it.
Okay.
Commissioners and everyone, good morning. I would like to say thank you for giving this proclamation today because our dispatchers are a lifeline. They do a lot for us behind the scenes, and they allow us to perform our duties and our job, do it well. So, we appreciate every one of them. We want to say thank you, and thank you, Commissioners, for doing this. If they want to come forward, announce your name.
They're actually separate. I think ours will go after we're done with nine of them.
Actually, come up together. We can do it together.
Okay. Jessica Jones, Calver County Sheriff's Office Supervisor, Communications.
Tommy Smith, Sheriff's Office.
Justice Concha, Sheriff's Office.
All right, I can attest. Go ahead, Crystal.
I'm so sorry. Commissioner Crystal Dadd, Acting Director of Public Safety. I just want to say that, if you notice, we just have Stumpy here today. And that is because our 911 dispatchers and our call takers are very vital. And it is, they're downstairs working really hard to be the calm in the storm for those individuals who are having their worst day. And also, being the point of contact for our first responders on the career, on the EMS volunteers and our police partners. They are constantly looking out for them, and they know, and they're providing the information that they need so that they could do their jobs and making sure, from their perspective, that they can get everybody home safely. So, I just want to thank all of our 911 dispatchers and call takers.
Absolutely. Come on up. So, I can attest firsthand to the importance of this job. Nobody calls 911 or the Sheriff's Office typically because they're having a great day. These people deal with people at their worst all the time. It's extremely important to have that experience on the other end of the radio. And unfortunately, in this county, we've seen a lot of turnover with our dispatchers, and that's something we're going to work to try to improve, to retain our dispatchers on both ends, not only Control Center and Sheriff's Office as well. With that being said, there's two proclamations here that I'm going to read. Whereas the U.S. Congress has designated the second week of April as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And whereas Calver County Public Safety Emergency Communications Staff serve a vital role as the initial point of contact for individuals seeking emergency assistance, they promptly dispatch suitable public safety providers or responders who can apprehend a criminal rescue property from a fire or even save lives. And whereas emergency communications employees are committed to delivering customer service excellence and upholding a high standard of professionalism. And whereas Calver County remains proud of our emergency communications personnel and the length they provide to fire, rescue, emergency medical services, police, and allied agencies for its citizens. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the week of April 9th through 15th, 2023, be known as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County joins our citizens to recognize the contributions these highly trained and dedicated personnel make to our community. Given under our hands and seal this fourth day of April 2023, signed by all five county commissioners. The other, the only difference in the line in here, there's two lines, I'm going to read. It's whereas communicator operators at Calver County Sheriff's Office offer emergency assistance to both citizens and public safety responders. And whereas Calver County remains proud of our Sheriff's Office communicators, operators, for their daily efforts to provide the most critical link to law enforcement and allied agencies for its citizens. Cool, let's scooch in a little bit. One, two, three. One more.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
The next proclamation we have today is for Gold Star Spouses Day. Commissioner Cox. So, please introduce yourself and come on up, please.
Good morning. My name is Brandon Temple. I am the chairman of the Veterans Affairs Commission in the county. And one of the most sobering and heart-wrenching things you can see is when a member in uniform kneels down to extend that crisply folded American flag to a family member and tell them, "On behalf of a grateful nation." That's why it's so important that we take time to recognize the spouses that are left behind and recognize Gold Star Spouses Day on April 5th. Often, we have Memorial Day and other days to recognize those who paid the ultimate sacrifice. But it's easy to forget those who were left behind and have to pick up the pieces. And from our last count, we have eight Gold Star Spouses that live in our county, to include Allison, who will introduce herself.
Good morning. I am Ally Van Holzer. I'm the surviving spouse of Colonel David Van Holzer, who passed from glioblastoma, service-connected toxic exposure in November of 2016. He served 24 years and 11 months on active duty and was the commander of Air Force One. And I appreciate you honoring him today and our family's sacrifice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please join us up front, please. So, like one of us said, no one signs up to be here for this one here. And a lot of times, we take it for granted, our freedom, which we should not. So, with that said, proclamation goes as, whereas the U.S. Senate designated Gold Star Spouses Day to be recognized each year as a day dedicated to those whose spouses sacrificed their lives while serving in the United States Armed Forces or as a result of a service-related disabilities after returning home. And whereas each year on April 5th, counties across the nation will honor and recognize the surviving loved ones of military service members who became members of exclusive community no one asked to join. And whereas this day serves as a recognition of the sacrifice made by the military spouses and the military for the fallen, a remember's day of their survivors, and an appreciation day for those who are sometimes overlooked for their support and service to their country. And whereas, on this day, Calver County citizens express their gratitude to those spouses who served just as their loved ones to protect our freedoms that our country enjoys. And whereas, we welcome the opportunity to pay special tribute to these families of those brave men and women who kept our nation safe. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County, Maryland, that April 5th, 2023, be known Gold Star Spouses Day in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that by this action, the Board of County Commissioners calls upon all Calver County citizens to honor Gold Star Spouses with appropriate ceremonies and activities, signed by all five county commissioners. Our next proclamation is for Month of the Military Child. Commissioner Hart. Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have anybody here? For, yes, sir.
Well, I'll save the introductions again, but this is something that is very personal to me as an active-duty service member. The other day, I was having a conversation with our 22-year-old son. He's off at college, and I was telling him how little Harper here was pretty upset that I had to leave for a whole two days. This point in my career, I'm not gone as much. And Gavin kind of paused, and he said, "You know what, Dad? Harper's got it so easy." And I said, "Well, what do you mean?" He said, "A lot of times, growing up, I didn't have a dad around." And that hits hard. And to put that in perspective, from the time Gavin was three and a half till he graduated high school at 18, those 15 years, I deployed overseas 10 times, not to mention the time training and preparing for those deployments. I deployed to Iraq two weeks after our son Aiden was born, and seven times, I think, in his lifetime as well. So, I just want to say thank you personally to my son Gavin, my son Aiden, and my daughter Harper here for their sacrifices and their service to the country. And I'm so thankful that we're taking this opportunity for the Month of the Military Child because they're in our community. We have three times the national average for military children in our county, and they need the support to integrate and to thrive as they try to live here and move from place to place. So, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Please come on, come on down.
I think I've shrunk. This is good. Hi, my name is Patricia McCoy, and I am the co-chair of the Veterans Affairs Commission of Calver County. We have two young gentlemen here with us today. Their father is active-duty Air Force, and there was a death in the family, so he couldn't be here today. So, their grandfather, Scott Deacon, who was the commander of Post 206, came today to bring the grandchildren. And this right here is Lucas Sandoval, and this is Seth Sandoval. And we want, on behalf of all the veterans here in Calver County, we want to thank the military families for all that they do and all that they go through. Now, this young family right here just got, how long have they been back from Germany? Four years, and now he just got transferred again, and they will be leaving to go to Hawaii in June. So, these children, they're traveling everywhere. They don't have a chance to set roots and have friends. But, so, they go through a lot as being military children, and we want to take this opportunity to thank them for everything that they do on behalf of all the veterans and the military families here in Calver County.
Well, come on up, come on up, Gavin.
My name is Scott Deacon, and I am a 29-year vet of the United States Air Force. And I had two children that traveled around with me, and I can speak to how hard it is on them. Both kids, just because of moving in age, we didn't live anywhere more than three years, just the way it was. They spent seven years, or seven different schools in seven different years. It's tough on them, but hey, they're well-adjusted and Calver County folks. Thank you very much for the recognition of their sacrifice.
You know, you bring up born. So, I was born in Myrtle Beach, was there like five seconds, then Virginia, then Andrews. My wife was on the other side of the spectrum, and you said seven schools. That was like Carolyn. And it's funny, when we talk to our kids, they're like, "You know, Mom, you don't have these lifelong friends like Dad has. I have friends from the time I was eight years old, right here in this county." And when you, and I was thinking all about that this morning, when you guys said it, I said, you know, and we, it's so different because where they were in their careers. But, and the toll is different because I have these roots and I have these friends. My wife has one friend that she met in Germany that she still stays in touch with. I got them all, I walked through Prince Frederick and see them. And, but I will tell you, I thought it was the coolest thing as a kid. My dad would bring me to Andrews, and I would look at the planes, all that stuff. I mean, I'm so proud of my father for doing that. So, I know it wears heavy on your heart, but I'm sure your son is so proud, and your children are so proud because, and it is a family sacrifice. It can't be done alone. I mean, it is, and, you know, without it, we have nothing. I mean, we're only free because of it. Anybody thinks that any different, you know, is silly. I mean, we've had to fight our whole way and because of the men and women in the armed forces. And just, there's not enough thank you in the world. And they, they see it with a different eye than the public because they live with you guys. Like, say, "Where's Dad going? Where's Mom going?" So, there's not enough thank you in the world. So, with that, I am going to read this to you, and it says, "Whereas Calver County is proud to be home to over three times more than the national average of children whose parents serve in the military. And whereas the children of our service members from both parents, military-connected children shoulder the burdens of service facing unique challenges from a young age, including frequent moves, leaving friends, schools, communities behind. And whereas the child of a military family bids farewell to their deployed loved ones, uncertain of when they will reunite and endure the extended periods of separation from their cherished parent. Growing up in a society that esteems courage, selflessness, collaboration, these children develop a perspective and appreciation beyond their years. Whereas compared to non-military peers, children of active military parents have a deeper understanding of serving something larger than themselves. They know their parents signed up to protect their country and in doing so, protect them, protect them and all of us. Even at a young age, they understand how important this is, and their parents' service matters very much to the people of America. And whereas April is the month of the military child, a special month to recognize and pay tribute to military families and their children for their daily sacrifices and commitment, courage, and unconditional support of our armed forces. This month and every month, we share our gratitude for these children. We recognize the challenges they face and commit to supporting the physical, social, and emotional health and safety of their families. And whereas the month of the military child reaffirms our commitment to ensuring excellence in schools, childcare, youth services to military children who face unique challenges that our other children, their age, never experienced. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County, Maryland, that April be known as Month of the Military Child in Calver County, urging all residents to recognize and support the needs of military children in our community. Be it further proclaimed that by this action, the Board of County Commissioners call upon Calver County citizens to honor military children with the appropriate ceremonies and activities and commends all those who serve military children and their families, thereby strengthening military families and improving outcomes for Calver County military children. Given under our hands and sealed this fourth day of April 2023, signed by all five commissioners." Could you just, that's a big job. Oh, that's awesome. That's awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you!
Can you look up here, bud? He's reading the proclamation. One, two, three. One, two. Want to come up here and tell them too?
Sure.
This is the next proclamation that we have is for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Commissioner Hart?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have someone here?
We have lots of people here. Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Harvey, State's Attorney. Child abuse is one of the most difficult crimes to detect and prosecute, as you can imagine, because it goes on behind closed doors. No one knows about it but the victim and the perpetrator. It's truly a silent crime. What can we do to prevent child abuse? One way is to shine a spotlight on the problem. Let victims know that they will be believed when they come forward to report abuse and encourage family, friends, and other witnesses to report what they see and hear. I want to thank you, Commissioners, for helping to raise awareness of the problem of child abuse in our county by recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we have with us here today, my goodness, these are the frontline troops who are doing the job to help keep children safe in Calvert County. I'd like to have them all come up and introduce themselves.
Introduce them, please. Please come on up afterwards. Commissioner State, attorney, please.
My name is Brenda Carr. I'm the Calvert County Child Protective Services Supervisor for the Calvert County Department of Social Services. I don't know if you guys remember me, but about five years ago, I came up here and asked for the county's assistance in opening a child advocacy center with the assistance of the State's Attorney in the Sheriff's Office. We have successfully opened that five years ago. We continue to open and run it. Today, we'll be hosting a open house from 2:00 to 4:00 with light refreshments if anyone would like to come over and see the child advocacy center. It's a place where we can take victims and have them interviewed in a non-threatening, child-friendly environment to make these disclosures a little bit easier on them. As a token of thank you, the department and the CAC have some lapel pins for the county commissioners. My team is behind me of the investigators and intake workers, the Sheriff's Office, and representatives of the State's Attorney's Office.
You're supposed to introduce yourselves.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry.
Mike!
I'll tell you, I'm having them one day.
I'm Deborah Walsh. I'm the Assistant Director for the Calvert County Department of Social Services.
Allison Lewis, Child Protective Services.
My name is Carmela Johnson. I'm the intake worker for child abuse.
Jessica Jacobs, CPS Investigator.
Nancy Bryce, Child Protective Services Investigator.
Brian Davis, I'm the Independent Services Coordinator for the Foster Care Unit, working with youth and young adults in care.
Good morning, I'm Rebecca Cordero. I'm an Assistant State's Attorney for Calvert County.
Krista Ireland, I'm an Advocate for the State's Attorney's Office and the Advocate for the CAC.
Paula Schrader, Victim Advocate in the State's Attorney's Office.
Bill Rector with the Calvert County Sheriff's Department.
Josh Buckham, Detective with the Calvert County Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Detective Ricky Williams with the Calvert County Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Detective Wayne Wells from the Calvert County Sheriff's Office.
Wow, what an awesome turnout, you know? It's, um, you know, you go from one spectrum to the other, you know, with children of parents that are serving, and then, you know, I saw it in a movie one time, you know, it said you need a license to fish, license to drive a car, but anybody can have a child, you know? And not understanding, you know, that responsibility's never done. You're 90 years old, you're remembering stuff from your parents, you know? People, they, I don't know if they understand or not, I don't know, you know? I guess if they did, we wouldn't have this proclamation today, you know, because there would be no child abuse. It never goes away, you know? And it, people, people think it's, you know, it's physical, you know? So much is mental as well, you know? And you folks are right there with it. You see the stuff that no one should see. I mean, you don't do that to a child. You know, a child's like a piece of clay, you know, that you always heard that you mold, you know? And you see what's molding it sometimes, and you trace it back and back and back, and you go, "My goodness," you know? How long did this go? And it's, it's all they knew, you know? Had somebody say one time, "I can't understand why they did that." Because they truly didn't know. They thought that was okay. And how sad is that? You know, you look at it from a normal thing and say, "How could somebody do that? You know, how could somebody do that to a child of all things?" And it's just, it's just nuts. I mean, it's just, it's, you know, I've been here, like, going through nine years, and you're still here, you know? I mean, it's, and thank God you're here, you know? But you just wish one day, like when we have this and, you know, abused women and stuff that wouldn't happen. I just, I don't understand it, I really don't. And, you know, it's no excuse because they were abused, and they pass it on, you know? It's just, it's no excuse. But just God love you and thank you for everything that you're doing because, you know, it is possible for that person not to pass that on, you know? It only happens from examples, you know? There's two people in my life that just walk on water. I mean, my mom and pop-up, I mean, I just watch the stuff that they did. And, you know, every time in life when you see something that you go, "Oh, I referenced them back and how they carried their life and conducted their life and how good a people they were." So those examples that you lead every day, it counts. It really does. So thank you again, and so I'll read this for you. It says, "Whereas Calvert County's future quality of life depends on the safe and healthy development of children residing in communities across our country. And whereas Calvert County seeks to raise awareness of child abuse prevention and support of children who have suffered abuse, the Calvert County Child Abuse Team reports that many of the youngest and most vulnerable citizens seek out support each year for abuse through their child advocacy center. Whereas effective child abuse prevention and support efforts for child victims and families succeed because of partnerships created by among local law enforcement, human service agencies, legal experts, healthcare providers, mental health experts, and other agencies dedicated to improving the lives of our children. And whereas Maryland has adopted laws to protect children, child victims' rights and provide essential services, our public and private sectors must continue to work cooperatively to maintain and improve programs and legislation that will benefit the youngest and most vulnerable victims. And whereas Calvert County calls on all citizens, community agencies, medical and mental health providers, elected officials, schools, and businesses to increase their collaborative effort with the Calvert County Child Abuse Team in support of child victims of maltreatment and to prevent child abuse and strengthen the community in which we live. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the month of April 2023 be known as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that all Calvert County citizens are called upon to join their fellow citizens across Maryland in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Given under our hands and seal this fourth day of April 2023, signed by all five commissioners."
So our next proclamation is for Autism Awareness Month. Commissioner Rosson?
Do we have anybody? Hi, how are you? Introduce yourself, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Chris Fenimore, and I'm a Calvert County employee. I am also a mom to a child with, child or a man with, diagnosed with autism at age five, who's a little shy, so he's not going to introduce himself, but his name is NJ. And I will be brief because I know you've got a lot on your plate today. 2023 will mark the 11th year of Autism Awareness Proclamations in Calvert County. This is huge, and we thank you for your time. Autism Spectrum Disorder refers to a broad range of conditions characterized by challenges in social skills, repetitive behaviors, speech, and nonverbal communication. Diagnosing autism can be difficult since there's no medical test, there's no blood test, it's all screening, it's very subjective in some cases. Autism is often accompanied by sensory and medical issues such as gastrointestinal disorders, seizures, sleep disorders, all of those sound fun, don't they? As well as mental health challenges like anxiety, depression, and attention issues. The proclamation drafted a few short weeks ago is incorrect, as the numbers updated by the CDC a few weeks ago make autism 1 in 36 children, and the number is slightly different from Maryland, but 1 in 36 children as opposed to 1 in 44. And that can be attributed to better screening, better awareness, but it's also more prevalent. In 2013, the number was 1 in 88, and so that's a 200% plus increase in just over 10 short years. Again, better screening, awareness, and access to services and doctors only plays one part in that. If you've met one individual with autism, you've met exactly one individual with autism. Everyone is different, everyone has different needs. My son plays golf, he plays sports. There are some kids that can't be in this room because of the lights, the number of people, the sensory overload. His sensory is different. Right now, he's putting his head down because eye contact is something that kids with autism and individuals with autism struggle with. But that doesn't mean he's not listening, because I will ask him to repeat back to me what I just said, and even though he's not looking at me, he does. It's amazing. He can do things that I can't. He can remember dates and things from years ago or in the future that those of us that are what we call neurotypical would struggle to do, and that's why we have our phones and our calendars and such. A few of the local resources here in Calvert offer great services to individuals and families affected by autism. Calvert County Public Schools is one of them. Our very own Parks and Recreation Therapeutic Services is another. There is an organization called Pathfinders for Autism, and a couple of their representatives are here today. The Autism Project in Owings, the Sheriff's Office, they offer services for families. If your, if your child can't swim, they could take swimming lessons with therapeutic services. If they tend to do what's called elopement, which is go towards water, that's a safety issue, and the Sheriff's Office can put you on a list and have that in the, you know, in their resources and can offer first responder responses. Again, a few folks are here today. Mr. Joseph Cormier, who is with the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. Ms. Shelley McLaughlin, who is with Pathfinders for Autism. Joy Weir, who is with Parks and Recreation Therapeutic Services. Ms. Margot Gross, who's a supervisor with Special Education. And a gentleman who probably doesn't need an introduction, but who might say a few words today, is Mr. Mark Willis, County Administrator. And this is, of course, NJ.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Margot Gross, one of the supervisors of Special Education for Calvert County Public Schools. On behalf of Calvert County Public Schools, I want to thank you for this Autism Awareness Proclamation. CCPS educates many students with autism. We have students with autism who receive special education services through an IEP, students who receive accommodations through 504 plans, and many students with autism who are successfully educated in the general education environment without either of these. CCPS offers a full continuum of service delivery options to meet the needs of all learners. And out of the 1,714 students we have receiving services through an IEP, 236 of them, or 13.7% are students with autism. These numbers only reflect students with IEPs. We also service 275 students from birth to three with disability codes of developmental delay, some of whom have a diagnosis of autism that they receive later. If there are concerns with the development of a young child, parents should contact Calvert County Infants and Toddlers Program at 443-550-8405, or Child Find Program at 443-550-8381 to request an evaluation. CCPS is committed to providing great instruction through evidence-based practices for all students, including students with disabilities. We appreciate your support and commitment to our students. Thank you for promoting autism awareness.
Good morning. My name is Joy Weir. I'm the Therapeutic Recreation Supervisor for Calvert County Parks and Recreation. We offer programs and services for all individuals with special needs or disabilities, but a majority of our individuals that come to our programs are on the autism spectrum. Our programs range from activities for the young in three and under all the way up to the adults with disabilities. That, our oldest one is about 89 years old. So we're glad to serve all disabilities, all ages of disabilities. And as Christine said, we also do a lot at the swimming pool at the Hall Aquatic Center for adaptive swim lessons because it is a high risk for individuals. They seek out that water and are unsure of how that depth is or that it can be harmful to them. So we really target those individuals that need those swimming lessons for safety. Currently, we have 46 individuals in our adaptive swim lessons per week. To give you an idea, there are three full-time therapeutic recreation staff members and three part-time staff members, and we offer anywhere from 10 to 15 programs per week for individuals with special needs. The current account of attendance for March was 684 attendees at our programs. So we serve a lot of individuals with special needs through Parks and Recreation. Thank you so much for your support for our department.
Hi, I'm Shelley McLaughlin with Pathfinders for Autism, and Pathfinders for Autism is the largest autism resource center in the state. We do, our resource center is a place where professionals and families can come to find a specialist, whether that's a neuropsychologist or somebody who cuts hair. We also help families navigate systems. We do workshops and trainings. So for instance, we do a lot of trainings with first responders. We also do trainings for school systems, hospitality industry, hospitals, and medical staff. We also will bring in experts on specific topics for workshops. And then we do family fun events. So for instance, recently, we rented out the aquarium for the night. We rented out the science center for the night for families. We have coming up baseball games, sailing. And so we really do appreciate the recognition that you're giving to this very unique population.
Hi, I'm Kristin Dziedzic. I'm a volunteer with Pathfinders for Autism, and I am also with the Baltimore County Police Department.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joseph Cormier, and I am the Chairperson for Calvert CCAC, the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. Today, I'm joined by two of my favorite people. This is my brother-in-law, David, who's been a lifelong Calvert County resident. He went through the school system through age 21, and now he goes to a day program with TCLE, the Center for Life Enrichment. And this is my oldest son, Andrew, who's just turned 14, and he's an eighth grader at Wendy Hill Middle School, and he has availed himself of therapeutic Parks and Rec for the swim lessons. We have used Pathfinders for Autism for the nights at the museum and the nights at the aquarium and movie nights and things. And, you know, it just, it's important to recognize these things, not just one day or one month a year, but to break down the silos of services and, you know, open the communication. We did a great workshop with the Sheriff's Office and Pathfinders for Autism. So the more that we can bridge these gaps and work together is a benefit for the whole community. So thank you so much for your proclamation today.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Willis, County Administrator. The reason I'm standing up here is I have an autistic grandson, who, when you think autism, you think, if you don't know, you don't know. And there's... And there's, that's why they call it a spectrum. If you've never accomplished anything but to win the heart of an autistic child or autistic person, you really haven't seen true love because that trust that you get from them, you have to earn it. And he's my grandson. I have to earn because there's such a distance between us. You have to earn it over and over again. Now, the good thing is, he is very functional, but that doesn't mean that he doesn't forget me sometimes. So, whether it's on Facebook or just when I go to visit, you have to take that special care and earn that trust back each time. It's humbling. I will say this, that no matter how smart you think you are, my grandson can put together a Lego set faster than I ever thought that I could put together a Lego set. It in itself is humbling. So, in their own right, they will advance past a lot of people in a lot of areas. So, just keep in mind that it's, you have to take your time and earn their trust back each time, but when you do it, you'll never forget it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Well said. Well, thank you all for being here today. One of the blessings for me, being a county commissioner, is meeting people like all of you and knowing in Calvert County, we support our citizens. I try to live by, we are happiest when we are doing for others. And when we do get out of ourselves and help our fellow citizens, we're the happiest. So, thank you for all that you do, and let me read the proclamation, okay? Whereas autism spectrum disorder, ASD, or autism, is the fastest-growing serious developmental disability that results from a neurological disorder, hindering a person's ability to communicate, respond to surroundings, effectively problem-solve, and form relationships with others. Autism is a spectrum disorder characterized in varying degrees by difficulties in social interaction, verbal and nonverbal communication, medical conditions, and restricted and repetitive behaviors. Autism can be associated with intellectual disability, difficulties in motor coordination, and attention, and issues with mental and medical health. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, autism impacts one in 36 individuals regardless of their race, creed, or socioeconomic status. This disorder not only affects the individual with autism, but also their families, friends, schools, and local communities. And whereas, we recognize all the individuals and organizations in Calvert County that provide early intervention, outreach services, education, and advocacy, and their important contributions to our local community, families, and individuals affected by autism. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the month of April 2023 is known as Autism Awareness Month in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that we commend all those who are committed to providing early intervention, outreach, education, advocacy, scientific research, and services to all citizens, including those with developmental disabilities such as autism. We urge all citizens to join us in increasing awareness and understanding of autism spectrum disorders. Given under our hands and sealed this fourth day of April 2023, signed by all five county commissioners. Thank you all very much for what you do.
Is there anybody else who wants to come up, please? Okay. Okay. Do we need somebody to hold the proclamation?
Yeah. We'll start with this one since it's on timer. Okay, we got two photos here to take, so let's scooch in a little bit on the edge, please. Three. Where's Katie? All right. Here we go. One, two, three. Awesome. I'm more on selfie mode, hold on. There we go. We go. One, two, three. Last but not least. One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Caitlin. Do you know Caitlin Mabon? She actually ran for something. You look, you resemble each other.
I did want to mention, one individual that couldn't be here today, and that is Coach Sean Banyan. He is NJ's golf coach. NJ is on track to play golf in college, knock on wood. And a large part of that has to do with coaching. And Sean has been integral, oh, thank you, in his life since age eight or nine, and his golf swing used to look more like Happy Gilmore, and it actually looks, it actually looks legit now. So, I just wanted to mention that he couldn't be here today. Thank you again, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, last but not least, National Fair Housing Month, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Cox, you're going to be disappointed. I'm Sean Kingston, the Housing Authority of Calvert County. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for all their dedication over the years to fair housing and recognizing fair housing just isn't about discrimination in rental housing. It's about economic progress, creating safe, decent, affordable, and sustainable neighborhoods. And I look forward to your continued support moving forward. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Sean, I want to give you a shout-out. I heard we got our magnets down there.
Did you get them?
They are coming my way.
But speaking of Mr. Cox, I'm going to bring up something. Rick Cox has been with the Housing Authority when it originally started, there were only two. It was Rick Cox and a director. Rick Cox has been with the Housing Authority for nearly 47 years. Rick Cox is fighting very hard right now for his health. He's been in the hospital in Annapolis. It's kind of sad for me, forgive me if I get caught up a little bit, he's such a great guy, but his prayers are necessary. He needs a bone marrow transplant. He's not showing any progress at this time. Texted last night, he, don't give his age, but he's been with the agency for 47 years. It gives you an idea out of college. And it's just, it's just sad that he's been suffering so much. So. When you go to sleep tonight and you hit your seats, remember Richard Cox and your prayers. I'd appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Please join up in the front, please. And last but not least, but like you said, it's an important part of the community to have a Fair Housing Act, so thank you for all you do. So, let me read the proclamation. Whereas, April 11, 2023 marks the 55th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Act creating a national fair housing policy to ban discrimination based on race, color, religion, national origin, sex, familial status, or disability, and whereas every American is entitled to freedom from discrimination in housing, and whereas the Fair Housing Act reflects Americans' determination to ensure appropriate housing and services are available to all without discrimination of each stage of one's life, so all can remain in the community as they grow older, and whereas providing access to housing opportunities and supportive services for all Americans irrespective to their social, economic status or abilities is vital. This access ensures affordable housing options are available for purchase or rent, promoting economic stability in the community's health, diversity, and integration, further strengthen human relations, and whereas the talents of grassroots and nonprofit organization, housing service providers, housing professionals, financial institutions, elected officials, state agencies, and others must combine to promote and preserve the integration, fair housing, and shared opportunity in every community to address the immense challenges of ensuring that every person in Calvert County has access to housing. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the month of April be it known as Fair Housing Month in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are urged to celebrate the value of diverse communities and neighbors and support the goal of equal housing opportunities for all people, given under the hands of our CEO this fourth day, April 2023, signed by all five commissioners. And please keep Mr. Cox and your prayers. Thank you.
(applause)
Get your front side. Awesome. Awesome. Thank you. If you have a question, let me know.
Ah, it's like you know what's going on. He's such a great guy. Our attorney that represents our agency, she was 40, she mentioned about this, she shared this story. She just told me she had cancer, she had number one cancer. And she said, Rick is the one who brought her comfort. He put his arms around her and grabbed her, and just cried. It was a Alzheimer. But he gave her so much comfort. So, thank you so much for taking the time to remember. He's such a great guy. Absolutely. I appreciate it. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Hey, that's right. Can-do guy. You might have to. Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
So, that concludes proclamations for today, and that brings us to a public hearing. Department of Parks and Recreation, Breezy Point Beach Shoreline Restoration Budget Adjustment Director.
Shannon Nizal, Director of Parks and Recreation. There are two public hearings scheduled for today. All hearings were duly advertised, and the certificate of publication is made part of the record of each hearing. Citizens are invited to provide comment on any or all of the hearings after each presentation has concluded. Each of the two hearings will have a separate comment period following a brief presentation. Anyone here in person must sign in on the sheet next to the attorney to speak. The first public hearing is for the purpose of considering and receiving comments regarding budget adjustment, BA 057 CIP, making available $1.1 million for construction of offshore breakwaters and beach restoration at Breezy Point Beach. And I'll go ahead and read the memo. Background: Over the last five years, the Board of County Commissioners, Department of Parks and Recreation, Calvert Soul Conservation, and the Maryland Department of Natural Resources have partnered to develop a project to protect the severely eroding shoreline on the south end of Breezy Point Beach and campground. This project will mitigate the damage caused by environmental conditions and flooding identified in the Calvert County Flood Mitigation Plan. Shoreline erosion is a natural process that occurs when water erodes away from the shoreline over time. Erosion can cause significant damage to coastal communities, including loss of property, damage to infrastructure, and harm to wildlife and marine ecosystems. In addition to the physical damage, erosion can also impact local economies by reducing the appeal of tourist destinations and decreasing property values. There are a variety of techniques used to manage erosion, including beach renourishment, seawalls, and other forms of coastal engineering. It is becoming increasingly important to develop sustainable and effective strategies to protect vulnerable coastlines. Discussion: A current capital improvement plan project funding of $3.9 million is still allocated for this shoreline restoration. After obtaining quotes for the project, all proposals have been higher than the budget currently allocated. An additional $1.1 million is required to complete the project and provide a contingency amount for unforeseen circumstances. A budget adjustment of this amount should be accounted for in the fiscal year 2023 budget. The budget adjustment requires a public hearing because it is in excess of $150,000. Fiscal impact, if approved, amends the adopted budget for fiscal year 2023 to appropriate and allocate $1,100,000 for construction of offshore breakwaters and beach restoration by allocating $350,000 from Breezy Point Fund Balance Account 90206. I know the accounts have changed now with Workday, but this was the old account, legacy accounts they're called now. And $750,000 from Chesapeake Call Course Project Account 431245006 to Breezy Point Shoreline Restoration Account 432202-45006 Construction. Again, these are the legacy account numbers. And conclusion recommendation: Staff recommends that after taking public comment, the Board of County Commissioners close the record. Staff will return in 10 days to request Board of County Commissioner approval of BA 057 CIP and request the Board of County Commissioners sign the related budget resolution. What I would also like to add is in regards to the funding for, that would be removed from the golf course, course, capital improvement plan of $750,000, those are projects that are no longer prioritized or projects that were able to be completed internally through our operating budget. And that included $350,000 for Phase III of a fencing project, $200,000 to run affluent water for irrigation. That was not possible at the time due to the amount of water that we would be required to take is too much than what we would be able to use. And then, a drainage project and renovations to tee boxes on holes three, four, seven, and 12 of 284,100. That was done internally and through our operating budget. So, that accounts for a little more than the $750,000 that we're allocating, but some of that was also used to do the restrooms that we have at the golf course that were a little bit over their original budget. So, we're not removing any projects that still need to be completed at the golf course, so I just wanted to make that clear.
So, Shannon, we've talked about this several times, which I thank you, so, you know, well versed on it, and just kind of want to let everybody know that nothing, no projects are, the golf course isn't going to wash away or anything like that, so everything's fine there. But this was something that had to happen, and unfortunately, timing is always, there's never a good time, but erosion is serious. It's a beautiful beach. It's a beautiful area to protect. So, thank you for digging in the way that you've done and trying to find where other resources can be and trying to keep it going as smooth as possible.
Yes, sir. So, the floor has been open for public comment on this hearing. Resolution 6-89 was adopted and is available here today to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. Those attending in person will be invited to speak first. For those joining virtually, if you wish to speak, plus press star nine or use the raise your hand function. Virtual participants will be identified by their screen name or last four digits of their phone number and unmuted, one at a time. Speakers will be asked to state their name and address. Speakers who are providing comments as individuals will be allocated two minutes. Speakers who are designated representatives of a group will be allocated five minutes. And at this time, I will check if there's, we have one person to speak currently in person, and I will call up Joseph Cormier, speaking on behalf of himself.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Cormier, 9201 Sam Owings Place, Owings, Maryland. I want to speak out in favor of this today. You met my son and my brother-in-law this morning. There's nothing they love more than walking down the beach looking for shark's teeth. I think it's important that we, you know, conserve our beach areas. They're, you know, the best resource we have here in the county. The only thing I would ask is if we're going to have a bunch of equipment out there, if we can talk to North Beach and Chesapeake Beach and see if they have projects that require the same equipment that we try and coordinate to save the taxpayers some money, but otherwise, I'm all in favor of moving this money over to preserve our beaches. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have no one online requesting to speak.
So, just one comment. I wanted to reiterate that Commissioner Hart said that this is not taken away from the golf course itself. It was earmarked a fencing project, so just want to let everybody know that. I was kind of disappointed that no, there wasn't any grant fund.
I was kind of disappointed that no, there wasn't any grant funding for this project. You know, you talk about Chesapeake Bay, they talk about the shorelines. I'm all for that, but just disappointed there was not any grant funding for this one here. And that's all I had.
And I could provide comment on that, too. We have applied for numerous grant opportunities and earmarking opportunities for this project, both with the state and federally, and none of those have been successful.
Mr. President, I move that we close the record.
Second?
I have motion in the second to close the record. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. You'll be back. Nine days?
Ten days.
Ten days. Next public hearing, Department of Human Resources, K-9 handler pay. Morning, Sheriff, Director.
Morning.
Deputy.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Melanie Woodson, the Human Resources Director.
Deanna Davis, Human Resources Deputy Director.
Sheriff Cox, good morning. Calvert County, thank you.
Good morning. Thank you.
This is a public hearing to consider and receive comments regarding the amendment of Chapter 86 Personnel Chapter of the Calvert County Code specifically pertaining to premium pay for K-9 handlers. Background: A public hearing will be held on April 4, 2023 to amend pay and adjustments of Chapter 86 Personnel Calvert County Code pertaining to premium pay for K-9 handlers. Currently, the code does not provide premium pay for K-9 handlers. The Sheriff's Office currently has 11 K-9 handlers and 13 dogs. Discussion: K-9 handlers should be compensated for the care and maintenance of their dog. This includes bathing, brushing, exercising, feeding, grooming, cleaning of the dog's kennel or transport vehicle, administering medicine for illness, transporting the dog to and from the animal hospital or veterinarian, and training. Fiscal impact: The projected fiscal impact is $70,928. Conclusion: After receiving any public comment, the record should be closed. Staff will bring the ordinance back to the board for action after the required ten-day waiting period. This memo has been coordinated with the Office of the County Attorney, the Department of Finance and Budget, and the Calvert County Sheriff's Office. I'd just like to add that the funds for the premium pay have already been factored into the existing budget for the Sheriff's Office. K-9 pay is given as a flat rate premium per regular hour and per paid time off hour. The K-9 pay is automatically added to the employee's hourly rate in the Workday Time Tracking System when the K-9 handler clocks hours or uses leave. And a K-9 handler is not eligible for K-9 handler pay for hours on unpaid leave or overtime hours. The floor has been open for public comment on this hearing. Resolution 689 was adopted and is available here today to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. Those attending in person will be invited to speak first. For those joining virtually, if you wish to speak, please press star nine or use the raise your hand function. Virtual participants will be identified by their screen name or last four digits of their phone number and unmuted, one at a time. Speakers will be asked to state their name and address. Speakers who are providing comment as individuals will be allocated two minutes. Speakers who are the designated representative of a group will be allocated five minutes. At this time, we have one speaker in person, Joseph Cormier, and he is speaking on behalf of himself.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joseph Cormier, 9201 Sam Owings Place. I just want to come out today and speak out in favor of this. I'm a proud Union member. Extra work deserves extra pay. These guys are highly trained and specialized in what they do, and they deserve to be recognized for it. I know a lot of the public look at K-9s sometimes in a negative light because it's associated with, you know, the war on drugs and things like that, but these dogs are also used in search and rescue missions and for, you know, a parent who has a child who might be nonverbal and elopes, having this resource is important to have in our community. So I think it's important that we recognize these deputies who are, you know, doing extra work. They need to, you know, get paid, at least that we don't, you know, lose them to neighboring jurisdictions because retention of people we've already trained is half the battle. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is one caller, 7756, that has not raised their hand, so presumably there's no one online. So exactly how's this work?
Basically, Commissioners, this is a basic code amendment, which at this current time, the fiscal impact I am operating within my budget. We're just asking for permission to utilize this code amendment, but we're paying them now within comp time or overtime. So basically, the premium pay is put in to replace that essentially, and at the same time, it's also, we're allowing the deputies to get off early to take care of the dogs. So I have the resource on the road for the citizens and also the deputy responding to calls another hour extra with this premium pay. And after doing the research, the $2 extra now for the premium pay does actually work out in favor and actually cheaper for me in, operating within my budget also. And looking at different departments throughout, you know, the East Coast, and I've been talking to many from Florida to New York, premium pay is something that's given to an individual that's taking care and having this type of duty like Mr. Cormier kind of testified to when he just spoke, and also Ms. Melanie Woodson, as she gave a description of what they do day in and day out.
So they're not allowed to take the dogs to the vets while they're on the clock?
They are. They, for an emergency, they will.
But not for regular maintenance checkups?
If, I would say, yes, they are.
So they are getting paid to take care of the dogs?
Correct.
So, but you just-
It would either be in a comp time or overtime situation if it is on the-
But that's what I asked. They're not allowed to do that when they're on their regular shift? You don't allow them to take the dog to vet appointments or checks while they're on their regular shift?
I mean, under my understanding, they are. If they're not, then I'll address that.
Mr. President, that was kind of like my discussion, you know, I've had with you, Sheriff, and with our animal control folks and stuff, is that being that we have this shelter and we have all these tools that we didn't have in the past, you know, now we have a full-time vet tech and all that, like to see us investigate maybe, an easier way for the officer that we have the medicine there, we have the vet there. I would assume we have all the same grooming services and everything for bathing and all the, where an officer wouldn't have to schedule time, you know, after a shift or, you know, to take away from the, you know, they could do it all within, hey, my once a month or however you guys do that, you know, that, but we have all those resources already here. And, you know, the dogs, a county employee, you know, should have all the same rights to use it, like, you know.
That's the only reason I ask. Because it sort of sounds like that they're not currently getting compensated for taking care of the dog, and I would just assume that that would be part of their normal shift work, that, you know, I'm on the clock in my shift, I'm going to take my dog to have his vet checks or whatever needs to be done, but it doesn't sound like that's-
Basically, they routine, what they're talking, they get off early or comp time or overtime, not when they're currently on duty because of the maintenance of the dog, routine maintenance.
Yeah.
Veterinary maintenance is not really routine, but when they do it, they absolutely allow to do it on the clock.
Right.
For years, they've been compensated with comp time. Correct. And it just builds and builds and builds, and then becomes unfunded liability, and it just, you know, keeps snowballing, so. And like I said, doing my research, I mean, this is going to actually be cheaper this way.
Right.
And I was just hoping this is going to be easier on the officer, being that, like I said, we didn't always have those resources and, you know, they schedule that day for, you know, part of the routine of however, you know, the maintenance of the dog and everything.
Because currently, you're reimbursing them for any vet services.
Absolutely.
So if they use our vet, that'll reduce your budget enough.
Yeah, it's a lot that goes into the K-9 unit, so it is a big responsibility, not only for me, but also the deputy, too, as well. And thank you for letting me know about that resource I have available to me as well this morning. Thank you.
Because they get paid, they're on the clock when they're doing their training and everything, correct?
Yes, sir.
They're not doing that off the clock. Correct. Okay.
Just hopefully it helps.
And the amount of training they do also, too, I mean, it's a lot, too, as well, to maintain their certifications.
For sure. Yep. Great.
So, Mr. President, I move we close the record.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion in the second that we close the record. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we see you in ten days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and have a good Easter. Thank you.
Same to you.
That brings us to appointments. Deputy Administrator Vasallo?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
You have more appointments to the Coe Point Light Station Commission today, and staff is requesting that the Board reappoint Leslie Garcia and Valerie Miller to the Coe Point Light Station Commission. On that appointment, you'll have one vacancy.
Mr. President, I move that we reappoint Leslie Garcia and Valerie Miller to the Coe Point Light Station Commission.
Second.
Second. I have a motion in the second that we reappoint Leslie Garcia and Valerie Miller to the Coe Point Light Station Commission. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So that brings us to an award. Employee Recognition Committee. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Ashley Brown. I'm the acting chair for the Employee Recognition Committee, and this morning will be presenting the April 2023 Employee of the Month. For this, I have Amalia Pleak Tam, our Service Awards Coordinator.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ladies and gentlemen, Amalia Pleak Tam, Environmental Planner here as the ERC Awards Coordinator. The Employee of the Month acknowledges individual excellence for superior job performance in the following areas: Effective public contact, respect for fellow employees, quality and/or quantity of work, contributions toward organizational morale, and actions that improve the county's image. Anyone can nominate a coworker for this award. Please check out our ERC webpage for more information, and it now includes virtual forms. All right, our April 2023 Employee of the Month is Dawson Nice, Computer Services Technician for Technology Services. Dawson, would you please come forward to be recognized? Dawson is being honored for consistently going above and beyond while helping with the Sheriff's Office redesign. Whenever an issue or a question arose, Dawson would show up and handle the situation. He not only skillfully identified the problems, but proactively created solutions to make processes better. Oftentimes, Dawson completed projects ahead of schedule, sometimes even before the start of the next business day. This kind of work ethic and dedication enables our government to operate smoothly and efficiently. Dawson has a great work ethic and a can-do attitude. His positivity is a breath of fresh air in an often challenging work environment and is a great contribution to our morale. His attentiveness to the customer and the quality of his work are a great reflection on technology services in Calvert County. The ERC is delighted to join the Board of County Commissioners in recognizing this remarkable coworker. Thank you, Sheriff Cox, for taking the time to submit this nomination. Thank you, Commissioners, for continuing to support the ERC, and thank you, Dawson, for all of your great work. And he has a team of folks here to support him. If anyone would like to come up and speak a few words?
So at TS, we focus on providing prompt, reliable, and effective solutions. We're dedicated to building relationships with our customers by treating them with respect, empathy, and understanding, and we work hard to achieve these things. We focus on collaboration over negotiation, responding to change over following a plan, and we pride ourselves on our focus on individuals and human interaction. Dawson is the embodiment of these things. Coupled with his intelligence, focus on task, and determination to achieve, Dawson had a very bright future at Calvert County. This nomination came from Sheriff Cox, but it could have been from any one of his many hump happy customers. I was delighted when I saw the nomination for Dawson, but I was not surprised. Well done, Dawson. You deserve it, and I would like personally thank you for representing TS in a manner of evil.
And I might have missed it, but who are you?
Every time. Because I'm the English accent, and I'm also the Director of Technology Services.
Thank you, Director.
I'm sorry.
Tell me something.
Good morning, Commissioner Sheriff Cox. My team in my office wrote this right up for Dawson Nice. I want to thank the ERC for acknowledging our great employees that we do have in Calvert County, just not mine, but our entire government. But Dawson Nice, during the transition period of me becoming sheriff, we had a lot of movement going on, a lot of reorganization, and this young man has, you know, gone above and beyond what the normal duties are of our TS personnel. And what I told him when I got the award, when we wrote it up, the follow-up there of Dawson, you know, in the middle of the night when he's checking on me, making sure everything's working properly, working long hours, trying to get reorganized over there, he went above and beyond, checked on us and make sure we're operation properly, and I just want to say congratulations, sir, and thanks for the fine work. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Andrew Miller, Computer Services Supervisor of Asset Management. Yes, that is a mouthful. I am actually Dawson's supervisor, and Dawson joined the team from our service desk. He was an intern, and within, what, five, six months, he was interviewed, hired full-time, and hit the ground running. He is absolutely what it means to be an exemplary employee for Calvert County government, and honestly, I could not do what I do on a day-to-day basis without people like Dawson on my team. So seriously, congratulations, Dawson. You deserve it.
Dawson, would you like to say anything?
I'd just like to say thank you to everyone involved, and thank you for the nomination. I feel honored to receive it.
Come on up.
Just want to say again, congratulations, Dawson, and on behalf of the ERC, we do have this beautiful envelope to present to you.
Dawson, you know, normally I said the most important part is a check, but you were already on that.
I had a little help on that one.
That's what makes me so efficient.
Okay, can we get everyone to scooch this way a little bit? Perfect. Okay. One, two, three, one. One, two. That's awesome.
Great job. Great job. Now, that brings us to consent. We have three items under consent today. Department of Economic Development Tri-County Council of Southern Maryland Grant for Armory Square Improvement Plan Budget Adjustment. Item two, Department of Economic Development Rural Maryland Economic Development Fund Grant Budget Adjustment. Item three, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation ITV Southern Maryland Cooperative Purchasing Committee 0323 Vehicle and Heating Fuels. Are there any objections to the items under consent?
I have none.
Hearing none. Those items will be adopted as presented. Now, that brings us down to presentation. The Office of the County Administrator. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Danielle Russell. I'm a Grants Management Program Specialist with the Office of the County Administrators. I am going to skip reading the memo mostly because most of the content is already in the presentation, if that's okay with you guys.
Good.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Wallace, County Administrator. So Danielle Russell is actually our grant writer or grant administrator. It's a new position that we have this year, so one of the items that we're looking at is how she can be incorporated into the overall county picture. And one of those areas that was brought to our attention is that for, to have her kind of overlook this and be in charge of the Sustainable Communities Designation Program itself. So this is new for her. We would normally have our long-range planner, Jenny Plummer Welker, up here, who is the most knowledgeable person that we have. She's unable to be with us today because she is, we've kind of double booked. So the thing that we would like to get out of this particular session more than anything is, one, to just provide the information to the Commissioners, but also to take your questions. We will likely not have all of the answers to the degree that we would like to present them, but this is kind of a learning process for Danielle in her new role to oversee this program. So she's going to walk us through the presentation. We will answer what we can, and we will bring back what we cannot answer today, so. And we'll learn as we go forward as she takes over this five-year program. Thank you. And I'll do the important part, which is to click.
So at the request of the County Administrator, I'm coordinating the Sustainable Communities Designation Renewal Process with assistance from the previous Designation Renewal Coordinator, Jenny Plummer Welker. This presentation's going to cover the background before we return with the draft application later this year, probably about June. For overview, the Sustainable Communities Act of 2010 established a framework for reinvestment and revitalization of Maryland's existing communities, creating a single locally designated geographic focus area. Since that time, the Sustainable Communities Designation has provided an efficient means of targeting scarce public- scarce public and private resources for multiple state agency investments and prioritizations. The Maryland Sustainable Community Designation for Calver County will sunset on August 21st, 2023. Calver County was first designated on August 21st, 2013, and the designation has to be renewed every five years. Designation provides benefits from the state, including the opportunity to access an Internet Agency Revitalization Toolbox of Financing Programs and Tax Incentives. The designation allows local governments, businesses, and homeowners to access a number of the state's grants, loans, and tax credits. In the agenda, there's a link to a two-page benefits flyer from the state. A range of benefits include grants, tax credits, and loans from several Maryland State Departments, including the Department of Environment, Department of Housing and Community Development, and Department of Transportation. So on the next two slides here, we have a couple of some highlights from the flyer. Financing programs for the Department of Housing and Community Development, Community Legacy Program, Strategic Demolition Fund, which provides grants and loans to local governments and community development organizations, Neighborhood Business Works Program, which is a loan program providing gap financing, Operating Assistance Grants, providing funding for Main Street Improvement Programs. We also have, in Department of Transportation, Maryland Bike Ways Program, Community Safety and Enhancement Programs, Sidewalk Retrofit Programs, Department of Environment, which I lost on my paper, Water Quality Revolving Loan Fund, Tax Credit Programs and Incentives like Low-Income Housing Tax Credit, Economic Development Corporation, Department of Planning, Enhanced Local Tax Increment Financing Authority, Sustainable Maryland Certified, which is a program administered by the University of Maryland.
Commissioners, at this point, one thing I would like to point out in general is that through this designation, it doesn't require you to do anything necessarily, but to get any of this or all of this funding over the years, you have to be this, you have to own this designation. So if you look at tax credits or grants, only if you actually receive those tax credits or receive those grants, would you have to execute the monies in the fashion of that particular grant. The point here is that none of this is available to us without this designation, the way that it is with the designation, and that goes for our municipalities as well. So when, if you look at who's involved in this process going forward, we incorporate municipalities and their, for example, the county administrator would be involved in it, or designee.
So this slide, we have the map of the Sustainable Communities. Currently, the area boundaries, sustainable community area boundaries must be entirely within a priority funding area and should be an area in need of renewal and reinvestment that would benefit from a targeted long-term strategy. The proposed sustainable community is within or near a town center or transportation center, or there's a need for financing assistance for small businesses, nonprofit organizations, or microenterprises. We've, this is a renewal, so these are our existing sustainable community designations. We have North Beach, Chesapeake Beach, Dunkirk, Prince Frederick, Lesby, and Solomons. The Sustainable Communities Designation must be renewed every five years. This renewal application provides an opportunity for local governments to update their existing action plan and report on accomplishments made over the past five years. Through the renewal process, local governments can request additional technical assistance and highlight any areas from the original action plan for which progress must still be made. County departments and municipal staff are currently preparing a draft report of accomplishments in their topic or geographic areas and preparing an updated Sustainable Communities Action Plan. Plan elements must include environment, economy, transportation, housing, community health and quality of life, and local planning and staffing capacity. Approval of applications is made by the Governor's Smart Growth Coordinating Committee on the recommendation of inter-agency review team. The review team is coordinated by the Department of Housing and Community Development, and the Governor's Smart Growth Coordinating Committee can defer the approval of a Sustainable Communities renewal to the Governor's Smart Growth Subcommittee. This is a brief look at our timeline. Right now, most of our departments have already submitted a draft of their reports on accomplishments. We're currently formatting that, and then we're working on the action plan as well. Starting to present an overview of the programs, we'll be presenting to the Park Board, Planning Commission, things like that coming up in the upcoming months, and then we'll be back to present the draft application probably in June. Then, do you guys have any questions?
Yes.
The Governor's Smart Growth Coordinating Committee, what is that? I mean, what is, what do they consider smart growth?
I don't have that exact answer, but I can get back to you.
So smart growth is, you know, it's a sustainable growth. So from a planner's perspective, it's, are you going to create a density that then couldn't allow for roads? Are you going to create roads that don't allow for lighting? Are you going to incorporate bike paths? Are you going to incorporate kind of that sustainable community for your particular area? So smart growth is, it's a term, it's very broad, but it's making sure that you take a comprehensive look at the entire, your entire growth perspective, meaning that if you look into, into our notes here, you're looking at the comprehensive plans, and the town center master plans, and you're looking at your water and sewer plan, you're looking at your parks and recreation plan, you're looking at all of that so that you do it comprehensively, and you don't bring in density that then you don't have parks for, or that you don't have water and sewer for, or that you don't have economic, you don't have places to go visit.
And I see that education is taken into consideration, education within the Sustainable Communities, population, age, let me see the next one, income and benefits, occupied housing units, and I see that Chesapeake Beach Town has, is called a sustainable community area, as is Prince Frederick, a sustainable community area. Does that mean that they, as opposed to the others, have asked for help? I just, I just don't get it why those two are sustainable. The others are in there as possibility of sustainable, but they don't have that designation next to their, their area.
Commissioner, it's actually, any of these designations are what the county, the Board of County Commissioners actually ask for. So, and that's why we would bring it back each, each time, each five years, we would bring it back, and that's that smart, smart growth. So it's something that would be presented to you. You speak about the, the metrics in there, the educational background, the income background, the, those are, those are metrics that we don't necessarily use here to do what we do, but we're going to get answers for you in more detail when we bring it back to you next time.
I think it's what identifies them as being sustainable is the question.
It is, but I think the question is more, why do we need those particular, the educational background, because it talks about master's degree, bachelor's degree, et cetera. We'll bring a more detailed response for you.
Sure. When you, when you look at the different areas, some areas don't seem like as, as you would look at the metrics and apply it to their area, they don't seem like they would ever be taken into consideration for sustainable growth. That's, that's what I'm seeing in it. So if you could come back with some answers, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Because today, we're just hearing about the process.
Truly, it's a, it's a new board. It's a process that happens every five years. You could actually come in, depending on the timing, and miss a five-year segment at some future point. So it's really an educational piece up front. Also, because Danielle is new to my office and new to the county government, she's going to spearhead this going forward, so it's a transition for her as well.
Because I assume when we hear the reports that come at the future meetings, we get a better handle of the responses for Commissioner Grasso's questions about details.
And the reports are more focused on, the reports are focused on the accomplishments in the various areas. So transportation, in, in public works, you know, they're, they're the ones that are putting together what they've done in the last five years in those areas specifically. So it'll be Prince Frederick and Solomons, Lesby, Dunkirk, those kinds of things.
Right. Is funding supplied by this grant? Does it mean, are we getting funding from this? And if so, what kind of, what kind of projects have we had in the past where we received funding from?
So I'm not familiar with projects that we've actually funded for, but it could be for sidewalks, it could be for lighting, it could be for parks, it could be for any of those, those items. But I will say that what we hope to achieve out of this, and I know that Commissioner Grasso and I have already spoken about this, so I knew of these questions earlier, what we want to do is to, to keep receiving your questions individually from the Commissioners. As you give them to us, we'll build the answers to those over time, and I think we'll all be a little bit more educated on the program itself. I think there's some concern about restrictions on us, us being the county. If we take funding, what, what may happen? Every grant, every tax credit, anything that we might receive financially from a fiscal standpoint are going to have strings attached. You can apply for what you would like to apply for. You can't apply for them without this designation. So it's, it really opens the door. It opens, it refers to the toolbox in here. You can't open the toolbox unless you're designated. What we seek after we're, after our recertification is really up to the board. So we can go back, we can, you know, something that we should probably bring back on a more routine basis is to see, give an update, even if it's every six months or at least every year, because it's a five-year program. A lot of this could marry up with the CIP program, for example, and if we're going to request that funding that the Commissioner spoke of earlier, Commissioner Cox spoke of, then we would do that, and we would be able to plan in the budget process for that additional funding. But without the designation, we can't do it.
You bring up a good point, because, you know, you think a grant is a blank check, so to speak, and if you remember the sidewalk project in Solomons, we probably would have been better off not to take state funding and do it ourselves because the requirements just didn't make sense. You know, I mean, they, they, they try to make it one-size-fits-all, and like I say, sometimes it's just, it's better to do a project without it, because sometimes contributions isn't even that much. But I think it ended up costing us more in maintenance than if we'd have just done it the way we knew to do it.
So from my perspective, my office needs to do a better job because this is a five-year program, and sometimes you get lost in the length of the program. You don't come back and visit for another five years. I think that there needs to be a process of visitation of this so that it does, as it impacts areas that the Commissioner, near and dear to the Commissioners, that we incorporate that into the overall project. So we'll, we'll do a better job going forward of making you aware of it.
I think it's going to be very helpful in the next presentation when we see the report on the projects that were completed in the past five years. Give us a better perception of what the program is and how it'll work moving forward.
And to help us better make decisions for our constituents regarding the string attachment, because sometimes, like Commissioner Hart said, it's not worth it to have the grant if it's going to bog us down and take us in a direction that our citizens don't want to go.
I remember calling Shannon one time saying, why are we digging up the parking lot at Holloway Point Park? And that was just to comply with the way Maryland wanted it done. I mean, we were digging it all up and had dirt all over the place. I mean, it was, it was a mess. So that was my introduction of figuring out like, hmm, sometimes it is too good to be true, you know?
That was the tree removal in the Center Islands.
Yes. You remember that? Yeah, yeah. I was not happy with.
And we have tried to do a better job, because in history, we've taken on some projects that in the end, we shouldn't have. So we did, in the last four years, we turned down some property the state tried to give us, because prior to that, they gave us some property, ended up costing us a bunch of money, and there's no benefit to it. So we need, we always need to do better research before we start accepting grants and properties, making sure there's a real benefit. So, questions? All right, we look forward to the next presentation.
Well, so this, this is Danielle's introduction, so I'm assuming from now on, she probably won't.
I've met her before.
But not from this table.
It's not her first time.
Danielle, just don't talk about air conditioning, okay?
I'm turning it over to Danielle going forward.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a work session, Department of Finance and Budget. We're so excited to talk about this.
Right? Right?
Morning, Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Does that seat warm?
It is warm.
I'm Sharon Stran, the Director of Finance and Budget.
Good morning. I'm Beth Richmond, Deputy Director of Finance and Budget.
Morning.
And I will read the memo for you.
Find that money tree I sent you to look for.
Um, we did not yet. We're still looking.
Okay.
So our presentation today is going to cover the FY 2024 Staff Recommended Budget. So the background, the annual budget process progresses in three phases. The first phase is the Staff Recommended Budget, or SRB. A public hearing was held on March 21st, 2023, to present and receive public comment on the Calver County SRB for FY 24. Phase one is complete. Discussion. Phase two is the Commissioner's Budget. There will be a public hearing for that budget on May 16th, 2023. To meet the advertising deadlines for the public hearing and to prepare the budget document for publication, we request that the Board of County Commissioners or B.O.C.C. their assistance with finalizing the plan during the April 4th, 2023 meeting. The attached presentation is intended to facilitate this discussion. Fiscal impact. The SRB was presented with a $41 million deficit. Conclusion and recommendation. Staff seeks guidance from the B.O.C.C. on what to include or exclude in the Commissioner's Budget.
All right, so we'll get started. So the purpose of this meeting is, again, to reiterate what Beth said, is to come up with ways to fund the deficit from the Staff Recommended Budget to the Commissioner's Budget and seek guidance from the Commissioners on options that will be provided and any additional options that you would like included in the Commissioner's Budget. So we'll be taking a brief look at the COLA percentage that was presented in the SRB and what our options are there, possible reduction in operating expenses, and possible reduction in fleet replacement schedule. Again, these are just some topics that we are going to look at. There are others included in the presentation. Again, this is just for the General Fund, which is Fund One, which is the main operating fund of Calver County Government. So the next two slides will provide an overview of what was presented in the Staff Recommended Budget. This first slide is showing you our revenues that was provided, and then the next slide is just showing the expenditures, and we can see the deficit of the expenditures over revenue. So going to our salary and step increases. For the FY 24 Commissioner's Budget, we have been able to make some adjustments to salaries, and we'll see that going forward on another slide of what the adjustment is. The step for the salaries base, again, this is just for Fund One, as noted in the header of the slide, or the header of the chart, is about $1.3 million for one step. And then, as a rough estimate, we tack on a 55% benefit rate. So that would bring us to $116, $117 million for Fund One to include a step in salaries and benefits for Fund One for, to be included into the Commissioner's Budget.
Every single employee gets a step increase.
If they are, if their prior evaluation was satisfactory, they get a step, or if they're out of probation from their initial probation.
Right, but this doesn't apply to contract, and then you have, there are some that are...
If they're attached to a pay scale, sorry.
Yes, if you could kind of clarify, yes, it's...
They have to be attached to one of the pay scales.
Correct.
So are our employees behind in steps?
No. We've caught them up last year.
Sheriff's Office caught up?
Yes.
Your question, Mr. President, is, are the county employees caught up on their steps? If you recall, you did an early, they were three behind after some earlier catch-up, but within about six months, you gave them three, their final three steps. So yes, that happened in a six-month period, one in January, or one in November, December, and then the final two, plus their step this July. So really, they got caught up, and then they did not miss the step this past pay raise.
Because when I started, they were behind.
Correct.
We have caught them up.
Yes.
To date. Did you get their answer?
Yes.
Yes, I did, but, you know. Okay, let me just ask, what percentage of employees do not get a satisfactory rating? Are all of our employees satisfactory? Is the bar a certain bar that anyone would qualify regardless? Is the bar a certain bar that anyone would qualify regardless?
I don't know that percentage.
That's something, uh, Human Resources, if they don't have it today, could get back to us. I don't wanna put her on the spot.
I did not either.
Good morning, Commissioners, Melanie Woodson, Human Resources Director. So a very small percentage of our employees get an unsatisfactory performance evaluation. I can give you the exact numbers and we should be able to report on that very efficiently here in the next couple of months with the implementation of the Workday Human Resources Information System. But it happens, but it is very few and far in between. And the way that our performance evaluation system works is that you would have to be underperforming, extremely underperforming in order to get an unsatisfactory performance evaluation.
Okay, thank you. So this slide here is a calculation showing what the cost for the general fund would be for different percentages of COLAs. I wanted to reiterate from, on the prior slide, when we looked at the step, the step averages about 2%. We have pay scales and the pay scales are about 25 steps in the pay scale. And the average has changed from the beginning of the pay scale. They're kinda top-heavy in the beginning and then they flatten out more towards the end of the step, the higher the step goes. So on average, and that's what we're using, is just an average right now. I also wanted to point out that the salary number that we had in the prior slide has no new staffing requests. When the direction was given from the Board to Departments, they were not to, it was to remain flat as much as possible and no new initiatives and no new staffing were included in the Staff Recommended Budget.
So the 116.9 is current employee level, one step and the benefit.
Correct, correct.
No COLA, no new positions.
No, this does not include the COLA, this is just including the step. So when we look at this slide, this is, would be on top of the COLA, I mean, the step. So if, again, if we did a 1% COLA, including the benefit based on that COLA, we would be at 1.2 million, so on and so forth. You can see it's a graduated sliding up from 1%, 1.5 to 2.5 and 3.
And just to remind everybody, today's a work session, we're not voting, we're giving guidance. And I think that from discussions with the Board, there's not support for the COLA that was proposed in the Staff Recommended Budget. So in our discussions, what you have before you today are just informational for you to decide what the COLA might be.
Right, and I did have.
Sharon, I'm sorry, this is, and this is just county employees, is this, is this Sheriff's Office, school system?
This is just Fund One, the general fund. So the Sheriff's Office would be included in this. The school system, we give a decided upon lump sum. And we do not.
Right, but I'm saying, when you're looking at this funding, so when you have over here the 116.9, you're just talking county and Sheriff's Office.
Yeah.
And then you would take and add the 116.9 to any one of these boxes over here. So if you went, say, the 1%, you would just take the 1.1 plus that. But that's not school system. So I don't wanna give, give off the impression that this is encompassing everyone that's in the Calvert County system. This is just a specific group.
Correct, this is just Fund One, so it does not include a Water and Sewer Fund, which is a separate fund. They are enterprise funds and their rates are based on their expenses and to cover their expenses. So we have Fund One, I mean, Fund Two, which is Water and Sewer, Fund Three, which is Solid Waste. And we do have a Parks and Rec Fund and the Golf Course Fund. So those numbers are not included in here.
But as a rule, they follow the guidance of Fund One.
Yes, we would not.
Exclude that.
Exclude that.
Right, I just wanna, when, when folks see the numbers, that's not the total number of what this budget could potentially be, that's just this portion.
Correct, correct. Just to point out again on this slide, in the Staff Recommended Budget, we had about $5.9 million in there for COLA. If we were to reduce it to a 1% COLA, we would be saving about 4.7. If we reduced it to a 2% COLA, we'd be saving about 3.6 million. And if we reduced it to a 3% COLA, we'd be saving about 2.4 million.
And she added in the halves, just in case.
I added in the halves, just in case.
So she is looking for guidance and we're not gonna vote.
So the 5.9 was a 7% COLA?
Correct. So.
Oh, back up, don't you want some guidance?
Did you wanna do, we can certainly seek your guidance now or at the end, however you wish.
You're looking for percentage?
Looking, yeah, looking for a number that she needs to plug.
Well, and, and to be honest, I'm.
It don't have to be exact, but at least some range.
And, and the only, the only thing I just wanna make sure on, because this is one portion till we get to the other, I, I am a little hesitant to commit to, I mean, obviously, we're gonna do something, right? But to what level that we do till we get more, my, just my 20% of the total picture? Because like we spoke today, there's still several numbers from the state that we don't have yet. And, oh, I mean, like, we don't even have pre-K numbers or anything like that. So I'm, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to sign the check until we know the, the whole picture, just, just my 20%.
So the next slide is gonna briefly go over the Board of Ed and the calculation that we have received for the 24 budget. Also, on a few slides after that, I have put together different options. Again, we can pick and choose, I just put three on there.
And I know I'm not helping you, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm a real big total picture person and I, and I like to know next year, because it's just not fair, you know, to, you know, I, you know how I, I work with that. I mean, I'm just very meticulous and making sure everything's sustainable.
Correct.
So.
When is the date we need to know this COLA percentage?
So we would like to have final numbers and so we can meet our advertising deadlines. By next week, we wanna try to lock them down, right?
You're just, and it's so irresponsible, you know, the state does this over and over and over and over. I mean, you don't have enough time for me to get into all the different things. You know, they put something out there, no guidance, with lack of information. I mean, just something like even pre-K numbers, isn't that important? You know, I mean.
Commissioner Cox, June 1st. We can play until June 1st.
June 1st, okay.
And we are not gonna have the numbers that Commissioner Hart wants until June 1st. I'm just trying to get her some guidance because I know that there's not support for 7%. So at least she can plug something and that we can still play until June 1st.
She said a step is 2% to 3% somewhere in that ballpark.
About 2% is what we're estimating.
Depending where you are on the.
Mm-hmm, on the pay scale. So, um, we want to have lockdown numbers by next week for the Commissioner's Budget. But there is an opportunity to change from the Commissioner's Budget to the adopted budget. We don't produce a book for the adopted budget before we adopt the budget. So we, we prepare it after the fact because of those changes and the quick turnaround that has to be done. So we do have a little bit of time between the Commissioner's Budget and the adopted budget.
Because we have another work session scheduled with the Superintendent. And until we have that, we're not gonna have a really good number for Board of Ed. I'm just gonna say it, uh, you know, this Board is gonna do for support staff whatever we do for teachers. So we don't know what that number is today. So whatever we plug in today, I mean, this budget is just gonna be fluid until June 1st.
And, and my mindset, I would like to do it, you know, like we used to always do, you know, county employees, everybody's the same step, same, same COLA across the board.
This budget's a little wonky because of some revenue numbers that we're not gonna be able to nail down. And because of what's going on with Blueprint, it's not gonna be as easy as it has been in my previous four years. We all know how I love budget cycles. And it's gonna be red for a while. And we just need to figure out what we think we wanna do and plow ahead because they wanna produce a budget for a budget hearing that's coming quickly.
Yes.
And I know where you wanna be, Commissioner Hart, but we can't be there, not this year. And so we've just gotta take a stab at some things so she can plug in some numbers and get at least in some kind of a ballpark.
And we'll see where we are.
And it's just gonna be what it is until June.
Right, until we go to adopt.
Yes.
It's gonna be a moving.
I hate that.
I know, because at, because at the end of the day, you know we cannot balance with fund balance.
No.
We cannot. I mean, I can never vote for balancing with fund balance because I'm never gonna jeopardize that bond rating, never.
But for this slide, that's why I backed her up. For this slide, I would like to give her some kind of guidance that she can plug today. And if it gets uglier at the end, we'll readjust.
But budget's always ugly, so.
So you go worst case and back off of it?
Yeah, you could do, you could pick a number today and we can still change that between now and the middle of May. But at least it will fix, you know, give her some guidance and get us closer to where we think we wanna be. Because I know we don't, we're not gonna be at 7%.
No, no.
And I know what the discussion is, but I've heard, I know where I think we wanna be. We might as well tell her that today. So she can at least plug that. And if it's that ugly, then we may have to move a percent or something.
So we could start with the three and back off of it?
You, you can start wherever you want and yes.
And it would be easier if you went with the higher number and then backed off because of the grant's implication in the Water and Sewer versus backing off severely now and then going back because then those funds would have to find the money.
Right. Yeah, so.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with three, as long as we have the.
The given terms.
We don't need a motion, it's just a consensus.
Yeah, so we'll plug in three for now.
Okay.
Okay.
To work through that process.
Thank you.
But, but one thing, and I just feel like I have to say this out loud. Support, and I know it's not up to you all, but this Board wants support staff to get their fair share of the pile as well. And we are very, very much behind support staff.
For county employees or for?
BOE.
For the Board of Ed, okay. BOE, sorry, BOE. And that takes us to the next slide of the Board of Education funding. I know there's a lot on the screen. So on the left-hand side of the screen shows the different components that make up the local share. And so we have the Foundation Program, CWI Program, the CCR Program, Compensatory Education, English Learners, Special Education, Traditional Supplemental Instruction, Pre-Kindergarten and Career Ladder for Educators. Now, this is put together by the state. These are the components that they contribute to and have broken out of, of how the Calvert County should also fund in these areas. So these numbers are coming from the state, it's not a calculation that I did. I can go over, I do have notes of what each of the components are, if you would like me to go into detail of those.
I, I just have a question, the state has, has talked about a little bit of structure on what a teacher's salary would look like projected in the future. I haven't seen any mention of support staff. Is there any verbiage? Is there any scale guidance, anything of what the state projects? Just so you could have some type of guidance.
No, we're doing that.
No.
I have not seen anything.
I haven't been able to find, so I didn't know, you know, which is, is disturbing. I, I don't underst- I don't understand that part. You know how my mind functions in a budgetary thing. I like knowing what I gotta pay so I can prep and all. And, um, but, um, you know, we've got that for law enforcement, we've got that from every other facet. But I don't, I don't, um, with doing legislation this big and this broad, you've seen nothing.
I've seen nothing.
Now, a county attorney, and I, I just, don't let me get out of school here. Are we allowed, we're not allowed to address that, correct? I mean, if we see, you know, how we were allowed to interject with law enforcement and do that, we're not allow, are we? What is, what is our lanes?
The avenue for interacting with the General Assembly on blueprint implementation is through your delegation, your senators.
So we can't do a local thing?
No, sir.
Even though they don't have guidelines?
No, sir.
Okay.
You, you can affect what you put in the major categories.
Right, but once you send money over, it's to the abyss. Because I learned years ago, you can't earmark it, you can't say.
No.
So, and so without any structure of saying, okay, if I, I, I don't know, whatever job, but in, in, in that juncture, when I'm here, I'm at this, when I hit this, I hit that.
You have four funding categories that you send money over to the Board of Education. One of those is all of the salaries for every employee of the Board of Education. How they allocate that is solely within the jurisdiction and decision power of the Board of Education.
Do they have the authority to come up with a structure?
For their own employees, they absolutely can.
So. I don't, in my business, I, well, nevermind, nevermind, nevermind. I don't, I don't understand why, why they would not have a structure for that.
The thing that is so discouraging, and this being my first time around with county, is that we do not or we're unable to send a line item budget to the BOE. That is so discouraging to me. This is taxpayer-funded, funded money. I, that is so discouraging to me that there are no line items. Can, can we request in the next budget that, will the state allow us to do a line item budget for the BOE?
Commissioner, the state will allow you to do a line item budget, but the only time you will see that back from the Board of Education and they can move the money wherever they want within that major category. So you may give them a line item budget for administration and a line item budget for first grade teachers, second grade teachers. But they don't have to honor that. As long as they stay within that major category, that salary money can be moved around and spent how they deem fit.
Wow, okay, thank you.
So last year, we gave them MOE, we gave them above MOE and we said, we're giving you this for this and this for that and this for that. And if you move it around, that's on you. Because we didn't wanna hear from them that they didn't get funded. Because we laid out the plan, we're giving you the money to do those things that you asked for. If you don't do them, that's not on us, we gave you the money. It was your discretion to move that money. And I assume we'll do the same thing this year. But we can't control the elected Board of Education and the Superintendent and how they spend funds. So, it's all we can do.
So again, on the slide, on the right-hand slide, so the MOE from, well, let me start back on the left side, sorry. So the $82.3 million is the local share. In the Staff Recommended Budget, we put in a flat budget from last year of $141.3. The Board of Ed for their superintendent request was $163.7. So the difference between the BOE request and the county funding is $22 million or MOE of $25.9.
You know, then I'm not gonna beat this horse all day, Sharon. It's such a specific number, you just figured there would be more data available. You know what I mean? It's not like it's a ballpark number, it's so specific is why I keep coming back to that. I mean, you don't know how many teachers you need for pre-K, you don't know. I mean, I hate, that's just an easy one to pick on, you know, or, or any of the other things that are carried in the blueprint, so that's, um.
And $481,000 for pre-K. And it's my understanding that, that isn't even set up. I mean, teachers are not hired, how it. I mean, teachers are not hired, how it's gonna look, I might be wrong, but that's, that's what I've heard about it, and, um.
Wow, and this is the local share, so it doesn't include the county, I mean, the state share. And unfortunately, I did not bring that information with me, but I think I, um, I think I, I do have the schedule. Um, that breaks out each of the components, the state versus the local. It's a huge spreadsheet, but I certainly can forward that on, um, to the commissioners, so they can at least look at it. Get a sense of it, review it for better understanding, that would be great.
And you know, I've been criticized several times, cause I won't ever just sign a blank check, you know, I mean, in business, you have hard numbers. You just do, I mean, and it's taxpayer dollars, not mine, you know, I mean, I've lost a lot of friends and stuff over that, it's not my money. So if you cannot produce, you know, the, the bill or have you, or what have, you know, so to speak, what you're paying. It's irresponsible, my thing, just to write a blank check, they have got to do a better job. We can't just eleventh hour all the time, this is not, you know, this wasn't created yesterday. This, you know, and, and like I say, we've, we've dealt this with so many other programs, I guess maybe that's sort of my frustration comes in. That, um, the eleventh hour, all trying to run up to the gate. When, if, if, if they were gonna put this in and put a timeline in, then they should have been more responsible with, with what those numbers were gonna look like. My, my piece anyway.
And Superintendent's coming in when? Maybe he can answer some of his questions.
We haven't scheduled that yet, but, see, and the other complication is when the state sent out the blueprint. Formula, or not a formula, the chart. And then those numbers don't match up.
Yes, it's in.
So the superintendent made a request, and some of his requests, he says is because of blueprint. Well, the state put out a chart of what Cowherd County should spend on blueprint this year, and those numbers don't match.
Right.
So we have a lot of discussion to have with the superintendent about how he arrives with his numbers for blueprint. And how the state arrives at the blueprint numbers, because they are different.
Yes, they are.
And that's how you get to the one thirty-seven, right? That's based on student population?
That's correct. Projected student population, yes.
Right, and that's down from last year, correct?
Correct.
So you start out with an MOE that was lower than last year.
Yes.
Because of that.
And people still don't understand how that's funded, they think you're cutting it's, it's, it's state guidelines. You know, they, they've come out and said that, they said, okay, well, that's per pupil cost. You know, which people think, well, you cut it, no, you're, you're paying per pupil cost. And so, and we, we've always kinda not held anyone hostage for, you know, and that was what the funding formula and everything else. But this resets the whole book, so you don't have any guidance, and you're really flying blind, and you go, well. In the past, you know, you go back to what you've always done, you know, we go back off that number, and then of course, all the red sirens go off and everything else, and. You're just looking for, what's the bill?
Right. I just need a number.
Right, I mean, I've had people say, Mike, I don't care, it's your job to find it, well, I, you, you have to know what it is to find it.
And we'll be working, um, I'll be working with the county attorney. Along with, um, other, um, local agent, county agencies, um, or county governments to. See where they are, see how they are funding their school systems for twenty-four.
Cause yeah, they're all in the same boat.
Yeah, so definitely, uh, be working on that.
So the plug currently is one forty-one.
Correct.
But based on the formula, one thirty-seven is MOE. So that's an increase based on your calculations of four million. But that's not enough.
So it's a, it's a decrease. So the calculation for MOE would be at one thirty-seven. We flat funded in the staff recommended budget of the one forty-one point three.
Right, but then after you did the new calculation, the MOE actually comes in at one thirty-seven, not one forty-one.
Correct.
But we've left in the one forty-one, because we know it's not gonna be one thirty-seven.
Right.
And it's not gonna be one forty-one.
Right.
Do we have a number for, since now we're on the education system for a step and a three percent COLA? Do we have that number to add to that one forty-one?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, um, but I do have that the step. The teachers and the support staff for, um, the teachers and the other members of the collective bargaining unit. We're gonna get one, eight point one two five percent. Now, the two point seven five would be effective January, I mean, July one. And then the COLA, there's a one percent COLA in there, and then the second. The two point seven five percent is part of the blueprint. The second part of the blueprint, which is almost like a half year, they, they would be getting another one point three seven five percent. Increase. So of a total of, and then a three percent step increase. So overall, by the end of the day, they would, year over year, they would be getting an eight point one two five percent. Increase. The support staff, um, would be getting anywhere between a seven point one two five percent increase and an eight point one two five. Percent increase, again, they have that sliding scale of steps. So some people would be getting two, some people would be getting three on the step, depending on where they fall.
Is that this year or by the, by next year's budget?
It would be.
Next fiscal year.
It would be starting in July one, and then there's a portion of blueprint, the second part of blueprint. For the teachers, that they would be getting the thirteenth pay out of the twenty-four pay cycle that they're on, so about mid-year.
Okay, cause I remember there was a break, I just couldn't remember where, um, so a portion July one and then a mid.
For, for blueprint, so at the June thirtieth of next year, their salaries would have increased by. In essence, eight point one two five percent.
And that process would start this July one?
Part, yes.
But the eight point two five includes the COLA and the step, so I'm assuming.
Correct.
Right, it's, it's however you get there, from my understanding, right, you just have to get there, but. They don't really say which way you go to get there, whether it's to a step, COLA, what have you, correct?
So the, the blueprint, so the negotiated COLA is one percent. The step increase is three percent, and then two point seven five percent, which would be July first, it's part of the blueprint. And then their mid-year, um, increase is the second half of the blueprint. So I can, you know, look at salaries last year and back off these percentages to give you an estimate. But I don't have those numbers specifically from the Board of Ed.
Once we get that, we can have a total salary number. And know where we're, okay.
Where he comes.
So this slide is, um, giving you a little bit of a, a couple of options. Um, on helping, we're, come up with some of the deficit that we're in right now. We could use three hun- um, three million of the insurance reserve. Again, as interest rates do increase, we are seeing a greater return on our investments. So we could increase interest income, uh, by three million. Now, that is offset by, pretty much by the constellation reduction. And, um, we have spoken with our, uh, financial advisors. So using, we don't wanna use Pago, or, excuse me, use of prior year fund balance for ongoing operational costs. But we can use it for one-time funding. So the twelve point six million that's in there is used of prior year fund balance. Is for capital projects that we're gonna fund with, um, cash, pretty much instead of selling debt for. So our financial advisors did let us know that this would not impact our triple A bond rating. And that we would review that information with the bond raters next time we consult with them.
Right, but next year, if we do use the three million reserves from health insurance, next year, we're gonna say, well, remember last year? We used three million, there's gonna be a hole.
Correct.
So, so that puts Band-Aid on this year. But doesn't stitch it up for next year.
Right, same with interest income, if interest.
Dips down, right, is that's a slippery slope, and I mean.
It is.
Right, so.
It is.
I just wanna make sure that I'm reading it right, that, that that's a potential six million dollars that potentially could not be there next year. And yet you signed on to a reoccurring, um.
To cover operational.
Right, re- right, operational cost.
Yep.
Right, so you could be looking for another six million next year, if that's the path that we had to use, go that way. But, but the, the guys over at, um, you know what I'm saying, they, they said that if we did that, it wouldn't impact.
For the Pago part of capital projects, it would not impact.
Okay.
All right, the next slide, please. Um, as I explained earlier, these are a couple different options that we could use, again, we can sort them out differently. You know, just asking for your all's guidance on, for the commissioner's guidance on. How you would like us to proceed with the commissioner's budget. So looking at option one, we have, which goes, the first line goes across all three options. Um, it's readjusting the salary, uh, calculation, which includes the step. And then we would take the benefit recalculation also, so those go across all three options. If we reduced the COLA to three percent, but included, still kept the step in there. We will reduce the, um, deficit by three point six million, and that's shown in option one. Option two is if we reduce the COLA to, um, two percent. So that would save us about three point five million. And then the next two lines are just factoring in the fifty-five percent benefit calculation. The next line item on option.
Sharon, that's cumulative, right? If you reduce to two percent, you get the three point six plus three point five.
Correct.
And on this slide.
I'm sorry, what did you say, I'm sorry?
So, under option one, you're reducing the COLA to three percent. Which saves three point six.
Right.
If you reduce the COLA to two percent, you save an additional three point five. So if you reduce the COLA to two percent, why do you save less than if you reduce the COLA to three percent?
Let me go back and check that for you. I have it, uh, actually, it's on the other slide.
I'm just assuming the three percent reduction, that's a four percent reduction from what was proposed, that's three point six.
That's correct.
Take another percent off, you get another three and a half?
It's really about seven hundred and fifty-three thousand savings every time you go down a full percent.
Oh, is that all?
Yeah.
So that don't look right to me, but whatever.
I might have, um. Yeah, I'll bring it back, just sorry about that.
We don't have to.
I'll look at that.
It just doesn't look right.
You're correct.
While we're on that slide, Sharon, Mark, this is for you, you know, years ago, paving was non-existent, we were using slurry.
We're not using slurry.
Right, right, and I vowed I would never sign off on slurry and hear that, I mean, it's a waste of money, but I see this cut. We had got that paving budget to a part to where we were very comfortable in replacing things at a timely manner, keeping the roads a certain way. I hate to quote a past director, but he said, Eric, no matter what you do, wherever you go, you need a road to get there. If this paving gets cut, are we gonna be back to slurry land again?
You'd jump way ahead.
Well, it's on this slide here, now, here.
The bottom, we haven't got there yet.
Well, I kinda, I know, you know my brain processes, I already processed all that there.
Oh, you've already discounted, discounted everything else?
Yes, so.
So what's your operating background?
I haven't landed on that yet, I haven't landed on that yet, I, 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 I know what it says, and I think it's pipe dreaming. I would like to see that in a little more detail.
Uh, I'm, I'm ready to address it now, Commissioner.
Oh, I, yeah, 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 we've talked about that, I, I, I am skeptical that, that you have ten.
So, Mark Willis County Administrator.
Who are you?
So there was actually, uh, seven million dollars in the budget, which was their request, there was an additional request of, of three million dollars. I took that three million dollars and said, uh, we need to reevaluate our paving program. There's no doubt that we can throw as, as many millions as you want to have the most perfect roads in. And I think we're probably close to the most perfect roads in the state of Maryland, anyway. What I'm more concerned with is, are we taking advantage of the monies that we already have in the budget for stormwater management? I don't wanna pave over many more, uh, obstacles than I have to, uh, stormwater management obstacles. Uh, this is a way for us to get a handle on paving, and when I say that, I understand what the previous director said. But I could say that about technology services as well.
Sure, I just wanna make sure that, that we're stable, cause that was such a stake piece.
So the reality for me, uh, in speaking with the Director of Finance and Budget. There's always an opportunity for us to adjust this in the future, we just have to be willing to do it. Yes, he probably.
He was waiting in the hallway, and then he heard, so I say paving.
The reality is, I think this is an area, because of the large amount of money that's always in paving, for us to take a step back. Recalculate what we're doing.
And I just bring that up, cause it's across, you know, everything, so that's, you know.
Well, that's all three options, right, so the reality is, is you take a step back for a year, and you look at it, and that's not to say that. Uh, when we get to June first, and then adopted June sixth or seventh. That the commissioners can't come back after we fully realize where we stand in the budget and provide some, some funding back to paving. We can do that, but I think this helps us get to where we need to be budget-wise.
Big issue, and I know you know, cause you've been there for it all, um, so that's why I just asked when I saw that, so.
They're not gonna like me, but that's okay.
I mean, you know.
They don't like you now.
They don't like me now.
Yeah, so, and then like, like, show Commissioner Hans' point, I mean, I am skeptical. That we have ten percent, we did three last year, that meant we were riding thirteen heavy, if we can do it.
And she took out, she took out everything that's not on the table, like salaries, and, I mean, this is pure operational.
Oh, okay, right. Wanted to point out, so there's contracted services is not in there.
Yeah.
Um, you know, things that we are almost fixed, you know, health insurance is not in there. Our debt's not in there, so we brought down the number to a very low number.
I saw that too, and I was like, so.
So like office supplies would be in there, or, you know, printing.
Okay, so, so, okay.
Your lunch money.
So you're not looking global?
No, I, I included, my opinion, what I thought would be able to be cut, and that's why the reduction.
That was a tough cut.
Well, and to go back to the, the three million for paving, the, that, the director at the time. There's a calculation on how often a road should be repaved, but a calcul- you know, that's not, that's not a science in and of itself. So I know we have Acting Director J.R. Cosgrove in the audience, and he knows. That there's an analysis done of each and every road in Cowherd County, and that's done by knowing, one. The amount of traffic that a particular road carries, the, the type of traffic that that road carries. And whether it's in the shade, or whether it's in the sun, or, or what the base is underneath of it. He takes all of those calculations and will figure out when a particular road needs to be addressed. And that's what he's gonna do as we go forward with what's remaining of his paving budget. Should the commissioners decide to go in that direction, and as we go forward, he will continue to update us, and we will. Make financial adjustments as the commissioners direct us to do, to make sure that we're fiscally responsible.
Okay.
Just remember, whatever you don't cut, you gotta read taxes.
You know, you know my.
I said that quite.
So, Sharon, you know what percentage contractual services were not?
Excuse me?
Contracted services, I know it had to go on up with.
I don't know the exact percentage, no, but I can get back to you on that number.
What the number difference is, either way, or both?
Yep.
But I, I think, Commissioner, on that particular topic, not to, I'm not the finance director for sure. But, uh, certainly in twenty-three years, I've gone through a lot of contracts, and when you talk about that. A lot of contracts are written with a particular increase in them, so you could have one percent in one type of contract, two point five in another. So we always come up with a, with an average, and we don't, you can do the fine tuning of that, but.
They can do the final number, it doesn't have to be specific per contract.
Yeah, we, we can get that average.
Increase that.
Right.
Yet the average.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just to go back to, um, and sorry, I mislabeled the slide here, um, on one of the numbers. So the two percent reduced COLA includes a step, the three point five is really four point four million. And then the, the, um, benefit rate on top of that would be two point three seven.
Those pesky benefits.
Again, those are estimated um numbers, so.
So what's the stomach for um, operating decrease?
If you could do ten, do it.
We can certainly um.
I mean, it's it's a small number, but the, you know, we're we're looking for nickels and dimes, I mean, you know, because there's a big bill at the end of this rainbow, so if 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 you, if my my twenty percent, if 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 you can cut it and not hurt um services, then I, then my my piece is take it.
And we're not making final decisions today, but just some guidance.
I mean, four hundred thousand dollars, but it's four hundred thousand dollars, I mean, you know, I I'm always counting paper clips, so.
Alright, so, going down to the next line item is, I did add about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in for a bond sale this year. Um, we did not go to have a bond sale last year. So we will just be making one interest payment in January, most likely depending on when we actually sell the bonds. So that I did increase the debt for two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, again, we did have um actual calculations come in regarding our health insurance premiums. So I did reduce those and I did reduce our other insurance line items. And then the last line I.
That's a number we gotta get from the Board of Education to see if they've gotten their health insurance premium calculation, cuz in their proposal, they have an increase. But we saw a decrease in there, so. We would hope.
Yeah, this is just the county share, correct, thank you.
But Commissioner, I wanna make sure it's not county share versus us and the Board of Education, uh, it's our share versus, right. Okay.
Yeah, that wasn't my point, my point is that they've got a quote, or they've proposed estimated a quote, which shows an increase. We've finally gotten our actual and it's the decrease, so my quest to the superintendent is, has he gotten his actual yet and what is that? Cuz he's asked for more and maybe it's not more, so.
Let me just clarify that for one moment. In the staff recommended budget, I did increase our health premiums, not knowing where they were gonna come in in at.
Right.
Our health premiums are higher than last year, but lower than where I projected.
Yeah.
So that's the offset, so I don't wanna confuse you that our premiums went down, they certainly did not.
Right.
But I think too, you know, oh, that many years ago, you know, we we looked, started analyzing how to be as efficient as we could, you know, we messed with prescription plans, you know, trying to do anything to to maintain that same level of coverage and not put it on the employee, and we looked at um going to the emergency room.
Right.
You know, and uh, because that was killing us, you know, and um, so, you know, I I would assume that they've done the same thing to try to keep cost, you know.
Don't assume that.
To their to their employees down, because that's where it ultimately gets passed on to, but I I would, I would assume.
I I do not know how the Board of Education um works with their consultant on their premiums. I know our HR director has worked with our consultants.
Because I think the cost of urgent care and the other was so much dramatically lower than going to the emergency room for the same type of thing that, you know, it wasn't a broken arm, it was just, there was a lot of, I don't know where I go, it's eight o'clock at night, so I automatically assume go there, and and that education helped us.
Yes.
Uh, saved us a lot of money.
Yes, mm-hmm. So I know the HR director with the consultant has brought back different changes that could be potential savings, um, that would limit the impact on the employee who has the coverage.
Saved us a lot of money.
And then, so the last item on here is, again, reducing the paving from what was in the staff recommended budget of seven million to four million.
You guys are good, I'm good.
Just guidance and.
Yeah.
Still early in.
Yeah.
So, I just wanna reiterate to make sure that I have the guidance that you all have directed. Um, we're gonna go ahead and include items line in um, one and two, um, which is the salary reduction and the benefit reduction. We're gonna reduce the COLA to three percent and include the benefit reduction in that. We're going to reduce to the best we can, the operating expenses by ten percent. We're gonna go ahead and include two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase for a potential bond sale. We are gonna include the health insurance premium reduction and the other insurance reduction and along with reducing paving from seven to four million.
Three.
Did I?
Three.
I mean, seven to three million, I saw the four million there, yes, mm-hmm, thank you.
So what's that get the deficit down to?
So we are working on that number right now as we speak. So I think it would, like, three hundred?
Put it down to thirty million?
I say right, thirty million more to go.
Just rough math in my head, it's.
This number would be thirty.
Probably not all, I think we're still thirty.
Would be at, like, eight hundred thousand roughly.
What?
A deficit of about eight hundred thousand.
That's good math.
If we, again, looking at revenues and we do consider the the revenue side too.
That's some really good math.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
If we can lock in eight hundred thousand, I'm good. I don't think that's gonna get us.
Can we go to public comment on the hearing now?
So if we in um, yeah, if we go back, so obviously, all these options we have for revenues, um, we're holding. Um, we're gonna be using those numbers as part of the revenue funding. Um, and then when we go to the next slide, um, so instead of using the ten percent in option one, we're gonna change it to the, um, instead of using the seven percent, we're gonna change it to the ten percent. So that adds about four hundred. About four hundred thousand. Four seventy-five to the ninety-eight. So that would just put us over a half a million, six hundred thousand.
Okay, and I'm gonna ask the question, and I don't wanna get shot by my cohorts, so I, and I didn't wear my vest today. The last time we raised taxes, how much revenue did that generate?
Eight million dollars.
I thought that was, I thought it was ten, but.
I thought eight million was a deficit and it was raised to the point to offset that, if I, if memory serves.
So right now, based on the assessments that we have in place, if you raised it by a penny, it would be one point two million dollars.
Property tax?
Yes, property tax.
Income tax? What about income tax?
I have not done that calculation yet, but I can.
Just for discussion. I am not proposing that. I'm not proposing that.
No way, and just.
But but you but you oughta show, you oughta show, cuz I I know where Commissioner Hans is going, because that's always, the answer all the time is, we'll raise taxes. Uh, you come down to some of these places I go to sometimes and look those people in the eye that are are, they got that pension. And that's all they got, they got their social security benefits, that's all they got. You have better done your job and cut everything, could've been as fiscally responsible for, cuz you literally are taking food off the table, there's no question. So, um, that's that's why I didn't have the guts eight years ago, I've admitted that many times, I did not know that budget well enough. When when that was done, I didn't have the guts, I didn't know the budget that well, I I I couldn't look at those people and do that.
And and even where you said we are, we know there's some new staff we've gotta add, that's not in here.
Yes.
It's a very small number, but we gotta add those. We're not done with BOE.
No.
So.
But.
And I'm just asked for, for reference for my new commissioners, if they didn't know that number.
To that point, though, if if we, you know, um, wanna even like to show what that looks like, what that really looks like to somebody's paycheck. You know, so I'm I'm seeing a hundred bucks and there's an income tax thing, do, am I taking home ninety now? Am I taking home eighty-five? It's very easy to go, I I mean, it's amazing how many times I've been told to raise taxes, every budget's like, we'll just raise taxes. If we raise that, we'd be the highest in the state, if we did that every time that that request came through. Instead, we've lowered it three times, and then you get criticized sometimes for that, which that's mind-blowing, but um, but what that would look like to just a person that, per hundred dollars, they're taking home. Because because a lot of times, too, you know, the, when it when it's done the other way and it's and it's put into um your property, uh, thing, a lot of folks, they see that first bill comes in that says they gotta shorten their escrow, and they go, mercy, I've got a five hundred dollar shortage, I can write the five hundred dollar check, or I can just have it built in. Well, you know what happens, it just gets built in, then it gets forgotten about. And I ain't saying that, but but the short-term memory kicks in, add income tax and your check reminds you every single week. To me, before you pull that trigger, you'd be very conscious of what you're doing.
Right.
Because that is hurting every person that gets a paycheck.
Yes. And just for reference, um, if we were to increase the real estate tax rate by three pers- three cents, um, on five hundred thousand dollar assessment, it'd be about a thirteen dollar a month increase.
Per month.
Per month, five hundred dollars basically annually, um, just to give you a reference on that.
Right, but now, now I'll play devil's advocate on that, cuz you know, I've talked to people every day. They're already saying, my house is assessed for more than what it's worth. So, so they're already feeling, and and it's true, they are, those houses are not worth their being assessed, let's just call it what it is. I mean, um, it went through with COVID, when everybody figured out that they could work from wherever they wanted, housing prices went. Even when you talk to real estate people right now, they'll tell you, there is no inventory. So if you've talked to a real estate agent in a while, they'll tell you what's right, even though interest rates seven and a half, eight percent, there's still no inventory. So, so now the person's got a house, uh, and taxes that they're already paying more than what they should, and then we go on top of it, that's a tough pill.
I'm sorry, I is.
I know, sorry, yeah.
But, it's just thoughts.
No, but it's no, it has to be, it has to go out there because it gets asked, right? I mean, you get it in the emails, just raise taxes, so.
Alright, thank you, I think we've received, oh, just wanna remind you of our important dates coming up. Thank you, um, I think we have all the items that we, the direction that we need from the board, and we'll move forward and keep you posted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, that brings us to public comment.
Yes, sir, the Board adopted resolution in nineteen eighty-nine intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. A copy is found here to my right. The Ethics Commission has asked us that we remind speakers of public comment that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy, and lobbyists must register in advance. Floor has been open for public comment, first for those in the meeting room, who may begin making your way to the microphone, then those joining virtually. All speakers must identify themselves, and whether speaking as an individual, will you be allocated two minutes, or as the designated representative of a group, will you be allocated five minutes? For those attending virtually, if you wish to speak, please press star nine, or use the raise your hand function. Virtual speakers will be identi- identified by the last four digits of their phone number or their screen name, and unmuted one at a time. Any speakers?
I didn't wanna speak today, but you guys are scaring the crap out of me, uh, with this budget and the deficit and everything. And I just don't see it getting any better in the future. Uh, we, I don't see any increases in medium-sized businesses coming in. Uh, I see a nuclear plant that eventually may or may not get redone. Who knows about the, you know, the the LNG, that that could come and go at any time, so. But even if those stay viable, I mean, this is, this is scary stuff. And I hope you guys are as, and gal, people are as scared as I am, I suspect you are. But, uh, and by the way, uh, I saw interest income, oh, we're gonna get a uh, a big uh paycheck for that. I hate to mention it, all the services are costing you twice as much as that that interest. So that's, that's, that smoke and mirrors probably not worth even mentioning, because all of your, uh, all the stuff that you buy is gonna cost, uh, you know, seven percent more, not, not gonna cover that. Uh, I was just looking at the market today, it's still flat, by the way, I don't know if you all are affected by the stock markets and things, but uh, we are right where we were one year ago. Uh, and if you go a little further, we're still ten percent back. Uh, and part of the reason that I I I mentioned some of this is, you have the the issue about dwelling units. We we keep increasing those dwelling units, they're gonna cost us, you can argue what the money, uh, what the amount is, but the numbers I have are roughly two thousand every year, not just once, every year in operating expenses. So what are you gonna do? And I know we don't wanna increase taxes, but what are the citizens uh willing to give up? There's only really two choices sometimes. You can cut and cut and cut, you can make the roads a little bit worse, uh, or whatever. Uh, but are they gonna, are they gonna accept that? It's hard to say, and by the way, my name is Bob Essis, I'm speaking for myself, I didn't want you to get me on that.
Thank you.
I was just waiting.
I know you were, I could tell, I I I know, I know a snake in the grass when I see one.
Oh, man, oh, mercy.
I'll do anything for a laugh.
Oh, wow, wow.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, uh, my name is Stacy Taman, I'm a twenty-seven-year education support professional with Calvert County Public Schools, currently presiding as a Calvert, president of the Calvert Association of Educational Support Staff. I am unscripted, I did not plan to speak today, but I did not wanna miss this opportunity. Thank you for your comments of support, they um hit me in the heart, so I absolutely do appreciate that. Mr. Hart, currently there is legislation at the state level that would create a work group that will study support staff salaries across the state. What we are looking at here in Calvert County is not just in Calvert County. I have colleagues across the state, we are working on a campaign that would bring awareness to this in the state of Maryland. It's called the MSEA ESP Bill of Rights, I greatly welcome the opportunity to speak with all of you about this. We plan to take this throughout the state, getting building endorsements, school system endorsements, commissioner endorsements and so forth. We need to bring awareness, this is absolutely a critical situation where fifty percent of the ESPs in the state of Maryland make less than thirty-five thousand dollars a year, and one in four make less than twenty-five thousand dollars a year. I presented at a conference in Seattle, a national conference, and we brought this work that we're doing here in Maryland to a national stage, it is across the country what we are facing. So I appreciate your local support, we're gonna need that, and I look forward to working with you as we move through this budget cycle. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name's Joe Coramere, and I'm gonna talk for myself uh for a few minutes here. Uh, I just wanna give a shout out to Ms. Richmond, I called and left her a voicemail at four thirty yesterday afternoon, and she called me back at five oh one yesterday evening on her way out the door to make sure that I got the answers that I needed. So your support staff here are the best in the state. Uh, we've talked a lot about the budget today, Ms. Grasso, I wanna, you know, thank you for your comments, you know, there's nothing in the blueprint, the legislation uh, about support staff getting a a pay ladder or a scale for them, and that's something that they desperately need. Uh, we talked about, uh, today during the consent agenda, uh, there was a budget award for the Southern Mailing Cooperative for Purchasing Committee on Fuel, and it's a way for Charles Calvert-St. Mary's County Government and school systems to bulk purchase fuel from a single vendor to save money. Anything we can do in that vein to shave money off the accounts, uh, please do. You know, anything we can, you know, partner with with St. Mary's or Charles County, uh, please do. Uh, we we talk about saving pennies and cents, the these are people, you know, the the bulk of the Board of Ed's budget is staff. We are the largest single employer in Calvert County. And, you know, we've got the Calvert CCAC awards coming up, and I've got staff who wanted to come, but they can't, cuz they have to go to their second job. Or they wanted to come, but they live in Edgewater or, you know, uh, Charles County or California, and they don't wanna have their kids out that late on a school night. So, we want our staff to live in this county, work in this county, be part of our county. You know, anything we can do with the Board of Ed, I know you say we can't dictate to the Board of Ed how they do their budget, you have the same power I do to go to their meetings and provide comment to them and email them and say, this is what we want our budget to do. They're not, you know, putting in turf fields and Olympic-sized, you know, uh, pools at all the high schools, we're just trying to pay people. So, anything we can do to support them and, you know, help them understand and transparency in that process and these meetings is very much appreciated, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller seven seven five six, you can press star six to unmute yourself, please identify yourself and whether speaking. Please identify yourself and whether speaking as an individual or the designated representative of a group. Seven seven five six, please press star six to unmute yourself. Almost, there you are.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, I, I apologize for that, I was having tech issues. My name is Stephanie Wright, I'm speaking as an individual today, I live at four thousand and nine Seagate, Veritas Beach Beach. Uh, I'm a military veteran and spouse, and a community organizer. Um, I called in today because I'm seriously concerned about the state of affairs surrounding public education funding in this county. Like many military families here, we came because of that excellent, well-reserved public school system. Um, I have kids in high school here, so I'm concerned based on my understanding of the situation, that this Board of County Commissioners is seemingly seeking to defund public education by not allowing enough money in this year's school budget to properly fund the blueprint for Maryland's future, because you all think you don't have acute control over the funds you approve for another elected body. Um, and, and I, that's just not how this works. I implore you to stop playing this dangerous political game with our children's future, um, and to Joe's point earlier, get creative about ways to fully fund the requested increases in the school budget. Uh, but I will concede that I was glad to hear that many of you, um, you say, say that you support the equal pay for support staff, that's very important. I echo, um, the sentiments of the caseworkers earlier, so thank you for that, I understand this is a complicated process. Um, April is the month of military child, people all over this county are constantly screaming, I support the troops and save the children, while simultaneously doing things like hindering my children's rights to refrain fair public education, while our elected represent, uh, representations fight over control of funding that is meant to strengthen our schools and the staff that support them. So I say, if you really care about the needs of military children, and those of us that sacrifice much to serve this country, you will find the moral courage to do the right thing and fully fund the school budget and the blueprint and cooperate, and that's with the Board of Education as well, our elected members should cooperate to find practical solutions. Um, in my opinion, the public conversations and comments, um, made thus far, you know, from the elected bodies have been a little disingenuous. I think we should all do more, please, let's all do more to reclaim our support and actually do the hard work on the ground in the legislature that, uh, move evidence-based concrete and permits for our children and this community. So thank you so much for your consideration and the chance to speak today.
That's the last speaker.
Thank you. So that brings us to Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Cox.
Uh, past week, I attended two D U, uh, fundraiser events, and also wanna shout out, uh, congratulations to the eleven students, uh, from our high schools that went to Allstate Senior Course in Baltimore under the direction of Christine Cook, the supervisor. So good job for them.
Commissioner Ireland?
Uh, met with, uh, members of Silence Firehouse, referenced their boat committee, um, they're in need of a fireboat, their current one is over thirty years old. It's fatigued, a lot of, um, issues, um, forthcoming with it. Uh, also went to the Osprey Festival, Mr. Ralph Esselman, first director of the Calvert Marie Museum, uh, did a presentation on Drum Point and Cedar Point. And ironically enough, I learned that the sand at Drum Point built and built and built up, the lighthouse used to be out in forty feet of water, and it filled into the point where the lighthouse was attainable by land. Um, whereas Cedar Point, over the years, was solid land, and it deteriorated. So we just need Breezy Point to be able to fill in that, so we're gonna see that's gonna happen.
Commissioner Sean, you don't remember when they used to walk out there, and they would jump off that, um, that lighthouse down there off the point?
I'm younger than you, Mike. But Sal, Sal and his team, uh, they did a great job putting together a good event down there. The, uh, the weather, um, didn't exactly cooperate with them, but there was still a good crowd, and they had a barn owl, a eagle, and, uh, a red-tailed hawk there, and I was hoping that, uh, Catherine was gonna calm down, but um, her love for birds isn't quite there from what I understand, but I did send her a picture, I hope you enjoyed your pictures. Did you enjoy them? Okay, good.
Commissioner Reson?
Okay, I attended a ribbon cutting in Dunkirk for Beach Beauty Supply, this is my third ribbon cutting and the third business owned by women, and, um, I encourage everybody to support Beach Beauty Supply. Um, I attended the Huntington Fire Department's fiftieth anniversary awards banquet. I'd like to thank Deputy Director Basalo, she told me that birds would be on the loose, so I decided not to go, um, because I'm terrified of birds, and I do not have straitjacket in my possession to be there. And I'd like to thank Commissioner Ireland for terrorizing me throughout the day with bird pictures. And, um, I'm not gonna say maybe next year, it's not gonna happen. I, I'd like to wish all of you a blessed Easter, thank you.
Commissioner Hart?
I just wanna wish everyone a safe, happy, healthy, uh, Easter, and that's all, Mr. Press.
So Saturday morning, I went to, uh, the Prince Frederick Rescue Squad with my grandchildren to see the Easter Bunny, I did not sit in his lap, but I was there to witness the occasion, had breakfast, they had a good breakfast there that morning. Uh, that night, I attended the Huntington Volunteer Fire Department banquet, where they celebrated their fiftieth year, uh, which is quite an accomplishment, I was a member of Prince Frederick when they were established, and, uh, we weren't very happy about it at the time. But, um, at the end, uh, they're a great department, and they provide wonderful community service, and, uh, we, we wouldn't be the county we are without those dedicated volunteers. And I do wanna apologize publicly to Huntington Volunteer Fire Department, we did not have a proclamation for them, because I didn't find out about it until Thursday, so it was a little too late, but we're gonna correct that and make sure we get them a proclamation celebrating their fiftieth year. Don't hide your face, it wasn't your fault.
It wasn't.
And I want to remind everybody that it's Asian American Day on April the fifteenth at the Calver County Fairgrounds, I'm not sure the hours right now, but if you wanna come out and celebrate. And, uh, Mr. Estes made some public comments a few moments ago about how hard this is, and it is very hard. And if you don't sit in these chairs, you don't realize.